A call to order the second session, the 2025 Budget Work Session Reviews to receive and discuss departmental budget requests. I would like to note for the record that all members are present in the council chamber. We particularly have Councillor Hawke, Councillor Munson, Councillor McKim, and over here we've got on the end, Councillor Iverson, then Councillor Wiltz, and Councillor Crossley, and I'm Trent Decker. So all members are present for our agenda tonight. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's Budget Work Session Agenda?
Comment.
And I'll have, I have a comment from Councillor Munson after we've taken a look at the agenda.
We need to add.
I'm bad.
The E nine one one.
Sorry, she's too busy trying to make sure I can see. Council, I move to amend the agenda immediately following item four by adding item five A, Fund 1222-0000 Monroe County E 911, and item five B, Fund 4933-0000 P S A P L I T.
Second.
I have a good emotion, a second. This was noted at the end of the night, last night about adding this in.
Yes.
Here. Any discussion on this item? All right. If there is no discussion, we'll go to a roll call or a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? All right. Note that the ayes carried it. I do want to recognize Councillor Munson for an announcement that's important to an ongoing thing in the community.
Hello Monroe County. I want to call to your attention the Lake Monroe Day. It's our third annual, and this is going to be a fun-filled day on September 15th. The event is being held at the Fields from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., but before that, there are multiple events that the public is interested in. A number of different tours of the drinking water treatment plant out of Lake Monroe. A pontoon boat ride you might want to sign up for. There's, there's a hike with the Sierra Club on Trail 1915. It's not really too rough, but these Sierra Club hikes are special because you get wonderful information. There is, in addition, a shoreline cleanup on several days, and the public really likes this cleaning up our lake. We wonder why there's so much trash out there, but it's keeping our volunteers engaged and busy. And it's, it's just amazing what you see that people leave behind. In addition, there is a paddle from the Pine Grove Ramp. And this is also a guided tour paddle. So if you're interested in any of these, go to the Friends of Lake Monroe website, or also check them out on Facebook. And I'll tell you, the 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. event for Lake Monroe Day at the Fields has a band, one of the favorite, local favorites, Busman Holiday. We hope you'll think about coming out and enjoying the celebration of our only drinking water source and the economic driver for so much in our community. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councillor Munson. We wanted to make sure that announcement got out there to folks. Our lake is vital to us. Sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle that it'll always be there. It wasn't always there, and we want to make sure it's okay. All right, let's move on. I want to just offer some remarks. We do this at the beginning of the meeting so that folks kind of know where we're at. This is our second night of these budget reviews. If you watched this late yesterday, you know that we had considerable discussion with a number of items, of items, and will continue to tonight. So I do want to welcome everyone that is either watching this or will view on a recording later, or even segments and highlights. I'd like to remind council members and the public that during these sessions, we will review and discuss departmental budgets presented. This will not be the final approval of the 2025 Monroe County Annual Budget, nor is it the formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th at 5:00 p.m. That's Tuesday, October 8th at 5:00 p.m., and the budget final adoption will occur on Monday, October 28th at 5:00 p.m. The public can make comment regarding a budget during those meetings. So if you're seeing something, hearing something, and you wish to comment, that is certainly your time. As we begin, a department will be invited to join us to present their budget. As a reminder, departments have been allotted an amount of time for their budget review. This is based on a time from the previous year. It's also an effort to keep this council moving and on session. One of the things we typically have prided ourselves on is trying to keep meetings efficient and short to an effective way while still doing the public's business and public vetting, and this is an effort to keep us with that. The times tonight were based on previous years. We've had a little deviation at times over that, but largely it's guided as well. Council can always extend that time as needed, but again, it gives us guidance on where we need to go. We do need to be mindful, councillors, I will say, of the time, not only of what we're reviewing and its importance, but also the fact that we've got a lot of folks either watching out there, we've got folks waiting out there that are elected officials or department heads. We want to be respectful to that. If a non-budget topic requires further dialogue, I'll ask our council staff members to reach out to the department head to schedule a discussion at the next available council meeting. I think even I deviated from that last night. I'll try to keep that more in line this evening. And during a department's review, they may be asked to explain any increases, decreases, or additions to their 2025 budget. Council members will then be given the opportunity to ask questions. Any council member can make recommendations to increase or decrease account lines based on the discussion and our need of the department. Council will then vote to approve moving forward with departments reviewed budget requests. Again, this is not final approval of the budget, but is a recognition of requests presented or is amended by the council. And I would like to note that the official role of the council under Indiana law is to represent the taxpayers in this process. And that's literally what happens. We represent the taxpayers. Some of us represent districts. Some of us represent the county population at large. And all of that is to combine and speak for the numerous people in this community that require us to do this on their behalf while they go about their busy lives. All right. That'll take us to item number four, an overview of revenues and expenditures. And I would like to give Michelle an opportunity, Ms. Kim Shell, our financial director, to briefly update us on any changes made at last evening's reviews and to update us regarding changes made to the draft 4B.
Good evening, council. I do want to remind you guys to pull your mics closer so that everyone can hear you. So I'll just, and that goes for everyone in the audience. Make sure you pull the mic close. So last night, we had a couple amendments within the election fund. So I wanted to let you know that I made those edits in the draft 4B. So here on line, it would be line 15, that reduced the election budget down to 655,971. So then you'll see the operating balance did increase. It was a, it was a net decrease of like 8,000 or $85,000 kind of thing. So, but that was the only significant change that we did last night was in the election fund.
Thank you very much for that recap. And so do we have any other questions before we ask the first department to join us? All right, seeing none. I'd like to invite our first department for the evening, and it's the Aviation Department.
We have the.
No.
It's the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm already breaking all the rules. And with that, it's not the aviation, it's the P S A P L I T request. E 911.
And then D S A P. Here we go.
I'll be a grown-up council member. Thank you.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1222-0000 Monroe County E 911 with the category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $867,000, capital zero, for a total budget of $867,000.
Second.
All right, we've got Ms. Angie Purdy here. We've also got Chief Deputy Parker with us from the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, good evening. So this is a budget that's specific to our central dispatch center, and we have a combined dispatch center. And the nice thing is this year, we actually have representative from the Sheriff's Office here in response to this budget. I do want to tell you that, so these funds can only be used for dispatch purposes. And this is the same budget as what they had requested last year, or actually for this year, so 2024's budget. And what I also want to tell you is they actually, because when I submitted this, I did it at the same level as this year because I couldn't find their document. But we could, we could reduce it, if you like, in the contractual line as they don't anticipate needing that much. It's kind of six of one, half a dozen of another. In particular, in this particular fund, because it can only be used for dispatch.
So was it higher because that was the request last, last year, and, but they're saying just 705?
Yeah. So, yeah, they, I put in, yeah, so what happened was I put in the 840, and then they asked for the, they actually asked for the 705. So the, the 840 is what is currently budgeted.
Council, I move we reduce line 30006 contractual to 710,000.
Second.
We've got an amendment. We've got an amendment here on this. Any further discussion on the amendment? All right, we'll go to a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Encourage unanimous. All right.
Do you want, so if, just to help you understand what this is used for, I spoke with the dispatch director, manager, oh, here it is. And what they're using is, this is the second year for the Spillman, actually Motorola contract. And which is, she said, indicates it's actually less expensive than the first year. And this covers all contracts for the, for dispatch, which is Motorola recording software, protocol software in, she indicates three disciplines, their AT&amp;T contract, which is the one I'm familiar with them using, their AT&amp;T fiber and dedicated line, and their ERS locution contract. Oh, and they also have their iDAX connection coming out of there. So that's what's being supported by this line.
Let's go to questions from councils. Is that what you're looking for now? Okay. Councillors, what, what questions do you have? Councillor Iverson.
I, I see a member of our Sheriff's Department here. I was wondering, how is the E 911 service working with our merit deputies and our road deputies? We have, you know, I'm a member of that dispatch policy board, so I meet with them once a month. And we have, we have a really good line of communication with, with the dispatch center. There are many times I talk directly with Chief DeKoff. Our field operations captain probably has more communication with their, with Scott Oldham and those, the, the command staff over there. But from an operational perspective, got no complaints, not at all.
Okay. And then for, does, does this at all impact the number of people going into our diversion center, the stride center? Or is, is that made at a different level than the E 911?
Not, not that I'm aware of. It's, that's completely separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question. I, I had one question, and I always get confused on this because different years, different people are here talking to us about this. But years ago, people were here talking to us about vacancies in those jobs. And I'm curious what we know about any vacancies at dispatch, or if that's okay or problematic. I like to keep my finger on that pulse.
Well, that's a different budget. So we can, that's the next budget.
Okay. Well, somebody be here to talk about that.
Well, we're here. I mean, I can tell you that they are consistently down in, in personnel. Chief DeKoff.
It's a topic of discussion every single meeting we have there. They are, appear to be making progress. They, I know they would recently changed their shift schedules, and I think that was based upon, you know, collaboration with the, with the operators themselves. So they're hoping that, that they're trying to do some things to make that more amenable to a workplace because it's a tough job. It really is. So I think they're hopeful that they're going to see increasing in those staffing levels.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, Councillor Munson.
So I was a council member to the policy board many times in years past, and we had many discussions about the surplus funds at the end of the budget year. Could you give us an update about this, Ms. Purdy?
Yeah. So again, you're referencing the next budget. Do you want to do that now?
We can, we can just wait.
Do it all at.
Okay. Because you, you'd sort of moved into that budget then, but let's just wait.
My comments took us into that.
Yeah.
All right. Any, any other questions on this budget, councillors? All right. If not, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Again, for the public watching, this is us accepting this draft or later work down the road. So a roll call on that.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor Hawke.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. That'll take us to the second item B.
Also, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 4933-P S A P L I T with the category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $2,585,000, capital zero, for a total budget of $2,585,000.
Second.
Okay. So this is the budget actually that provides for the, the general personnel, some of the housekeeping supplies, things of that nature for our dispatch center. And due to the high reserves that are experienced by both the city and the county, they, they have approved, agreed to this flat rate, so no increase in their rate. And their ultimate budget, which I don't have in front of me, they budget for much more. However, they have never expended all of their budget, and they generally, they haven't, and it's due to personnel issues. They've been down eight, 13 dispatchers. I'm not sure where the current situation is, but I do know that that is just a constant battle, and I believe it's a battle across the, the nation. I don't think it's something that's just here in Monroe County, but it may be worse here. I don't know. I can't speak to that. But so that it's a flat, they, they didn't increase the rate. And in regards to the reserves that Monroe County is holding, we currently will have, we've got like, so let's see here, we carry forward at 1.7. We've, we, we have already brought, so we've got almost 2 million in reserves, probably be more, a little bit more than 2 million. I did the math. And I can't speak to the, the city, but they, the last time I spoke with them, they had about a million in reserves.
Questions from council. I've got Councillor Wiltz.
So I am the council person who attends the dispatch policy board. I'm just looking at my notes. And I think what I wrote down, if I can read my own writing, is that the staffing budget includes a 5% increase for staff, is that, and that was dependent then on something the city was doing. Is that correct? Could you elaborate or clarify my thoughts?
Sure. Yeah. So they generally, when they submit this budget to us, that we look at it, and then it goes to the policy board. They generally include a 5% increase for personnel. And then I believe this year they were also adding personnel, which was a question that we had because they add personnel, but yet they have not been able to fill the vacant, so it's just a constant, it's a constant balloon that's just never getting inflated, I guess, that kind of situation. So I can talk more about that, but it's not really necessary.
I guess what I'm saying is it looks like a minimum 5% COLA for dispatch.
That's my understanding, and that's dependent on the city. So.
Okay.
They, they will, the ones who will actually determine.
Okay.
So, so the city COLA will become whatever.
Yeah.
Which I think they've said 3%, right? Is that the number that they've?
I thought I heard that.
It's that the cities do it. My chicken scratch says that the city is doing a salary study that will likely increase by that amount.
They're doing like a job reclassification.
Across the whole thing. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So maybe it's been updated to 3% is predicted still, or?
Or maybe this is more than just COLA. Maybe this is increases taking effect, taking into account the, the CROW study that they.
Sure.
I.
I also think it's just their way of trying to get a budget together, you know, to at least have presented and, and kind of go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councillor Wiltz? Okay, I next saw Councillor McKim, and then I'll go to Munson.
Actually, I think Munson's first.
Go ahead.
So I hope all of you might recall that the surplus funds, at least those in the county, but I think also the city that are carried over year to year are thought of as sort of a revenue building fund to replace equipment when that needs to be replaced. So we don't have as huge a hit for incredibly expensive equipment. And I, I don't have any more information about that, but maybe Councillor Wiltz does, or, or Ms. Purdy might.
I can say that the last few conversations that we've had with Chief DeKoff and staff is that we're actually doing really well with being able to maintain and upgrade the equipment as necessary. You know, if, if, as per the inter-local, if the P S A P is unable to fund the dispatch center, then each entity, each governmental entity is, is expected to pay, you know, half of the additional fees. So at this point in time, there are sufficient reserves that we're, there's no intention to ever have to reach out to the government entities to, to fill that void, because that was something that was happening long before this local income tax was put into place. So it's been, I think, very beneficial.
I know that one of our meetings there at the policy board, we went through a pretty lengthy discussion about the long-range plan for that equipment. Because you know, they, they, they have obviously the purchase dates, the warranty dates, and then a long-range plan for when they realize that that equipment will be at the end of life. So they, we've planned that out for several, several years in the future, and I know that those reserve funds are an integral part of that planning process for the long-term, you know, well-being of, of that equipment. And it's, and it's staggered so that, you know, everything doesn't happen at once. So I don't know if that helps or not, but.
No, I think it's good for the, the public to know this. So thank you.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yeah. So I believe, Ms. Purdy, you said at the beginning that the, that there was a surplus on our side of about $2 million. Does that mean from the, the staff table's perspective that there's a, there's reserves in 4933 of at least $2 million? That's, that's essentially what we're talking about.
That's what I'm looking at. Yeah.
Okay, all right. And, and so, and, so we're appropriating, or we're being asked to appropriate to 585 million, but the tax is actually going to bring in 2.71 million. So we're actually, even with this transfer right now, we're, we're growing the surplus. We're not spending it down. It really seems, though, I know we held the, or they, I mean, the Income Tax Council held the P S A P L I T rate constant this year. They probably should take it down next year.
There was some conversation, if I may, about that, but they, they are doing the study on their salaries. So there was a reticence to really change that at this time until they have a, an answer on the salary studies.
Okay. Well, hopefully by the time we, not, not me, but y'all do this next year, there, there might be an opportunity to take that rate down, which just means more in the P S L I T for, for everyone else. And then also, this isn't really. And then also, th- this isn't really the budget for the dispatch center. This is the budget for our transfer to the city to fund the dispatch center.
Right.
In the past, we've actually voted on the budget for the dispatch center as well. Is that still?
Yeah, I, that.
Planned for this?
I need clarification on, uh, Michelle, I don't know if we have that in the run up to events. Counselor McKim is asking, do voting on the budget of the actual dispatch center, which is, I think, where I'm getting confused.
Right, right, exactly. We, we in the past have voted along with the city council on the dispatch center budget, in addition to the interlocal that funds the dispatch center. Those are two separate budgets.
I think that's why I'm.
Yes, I have sent an email out, uh, to the dispatch person and Chief Decoff, uh, seeing if they could attend the September twenty seventh meeting, but I have not heard back from them.
Okay, so you've got it on your radar, though, that we'd actually vote for that. Because that is where, yeah, uh, Counselor Deckard is thinking, where we actually ask detailed questions about the budget.
So, so this is voting on the fund that funds that. That's voting on their actual day to day.
We basically send the city a check for two million five hundred eighty five thousand dollars and then, but, but yeah, we're not, right? We don't have the visibility in this budget into the details of how it's spent.
All right, thank you. Thank, well, thanks for everyone's patience on figuring that out. Counselor Hawke.
Yes. When, uh, we received the supplemental, uh, how much of that, uh, did, did we send any of that to dispatch? Or do we hold it back? Because really, all we are required to send to them, even if we get in more money than what the, what has been contracted for, we don't send them that portion that's more than we contract for. We save that back into the reserves. So I would think the supplemental might also be held back in the reserves. Is that the case?
That is correct. Yeah, they, that's, so today, um, we're doing the appropriation for the interlocal of the lit income that will come in, so that's the two, two million five hundred eighty five thousand. And, um, that's all they will get. Um, and it's dispersed to them monthly, um, as the income is, is received by the auditor. And then anything in addition to that just sticks in, just stays in this bucket.
Other questions? Or comments? Right, seeing none, uh, no more, uh, on that one, we will go to a roll call on accepting this.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz. To pass unanimously.
Right. And so that will conclude the budget review for Monroe County Central Dispatch. At this point, there'll be more to come.
I thank you so much.
We'll next move on to item five, aviation.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund eleven oh seven dash zero 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 aviation fund with the category request of personnel, nine hundred thousand five hundred twenty six dollars, supplies, one hundred seventy thousand two seventy five dollars, services, five hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, capital, one hundred thirty two thousand dollars for a total budget of one million seven hundred sixty six thousand, seven hundred fifty one dollars.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. We want to welcome our aviation director, Carlos Laverty here. Welcome back.
Good evening. Uh, so yeah, I bring to you, uh, a nice here budget. Uh, we're doing our best at the Monroe County Airport to, uh, leverage that beautiful piece of infr- infrastructure to its highest and best use for Monroe County. I've got some proposed increases that we can talk about. All right. Feel like I'm definitely leading the dance here.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
Tell, tell us what we need to know. Okay. Uh, I've got some specific targeted pieces that I can discuss. Um, and I will just talk about those. Uh, coming in here to the ones, uh, I have a part timeline here. Uh, I'm proposing forty thousand in part time. In twenty twenty two, that number was thirty five thousand. Uh, we reduced that last year, uh, to help make some room for some COLA. Uh, I would like to get us back to where we are. We rely heavily on part time at the airport, uh, particularly, uh, in mowing season. We have quite a lot of grass to mow. And, and then, um, because the, the way we're structured, uh, I have a staff of five that, uh, is there twenty four seven, they plow the snow, they're also the aircraft rescue firefighters. So during the winter time, there's a big demand, uh, on their time. And the way we're structured now is, uh, those individuals do not earn overtime, they earn comp time. So during the winter, they really rack it up, uh, because most of those ARF standbys that we have to perform for the airline charters happen in the middle of the night. So they're accruing large amounts of comp time for that. And then anytime there's a snow event, um, it always snows on a weekend or in the middle of the night, always. So we roll into the summertime and these individuals will ha- easily have over a hundred hours, uh, plus of comp time, uh, just from those two responsibilities. And when we roll into mowing season, uh, we need that help from part time. So that's, that's the big reasoning for that request. Uh, rolling down to the secretary line, uh, I'm proposing that we take our, uh, thirty five hour full time secretary to forty hours. Uh, that position is now the only position at the airport that is not, uh, forty hours. And she is also our front desk reception and handles all of our phone calls and along with, uh, additional billing and administrative responsibility. So having her check out at three thirty is a handicap for the rest of us. Coming down here into the twos, uh, I'm proposing a, a, a small increase for grass chemicals. Uh, that's like fertilizer, seed, uh, small increase for uniforms. I will get to electrical airfield in a minute and building hardware. So those items, the grass chemicals, uniforms, building hardware and laundry and cleaning, those are byproducts of us actually just being more productive at the airport. Uh, things have really kind of been, uh, humming along for us. We had a new addition to the airport, uh, leadership team, uh, about a year and a half ago. Uh, and we're getting a lot more productivity out of our staff. And we've noticed we've been just doing more work and burning through some more supplies. So just looking for modest increases there. In the electrical airfield line, uh, I'm proposing we go from fourteen four fifty to twenty thousand. And that is to help us build up an inventory of LED lights for our airfield. If you'll recall, we've been transitioning over to a, a new LED system. Unfortunately, with that project, uh, that we just wrapped up, the FAA did not really give us any money to build up, uh, a spare parts inventory. And, uh, the incandescent equipment was very cheap. LED is not, uh, we could get an incandescent light bulb for like ten, twenty dollars. Uh, we have to buy a, a complete LED fixture and those are five hundred a pop. Uh, and when we order those now, we don't have any on stop when we order them. It's about a three week lead time. So we're just trying to build up a little bit of inventory there. Gas, oil and lubricants, sorry, gas, oil and lubricants at, uh, twenty four two oh two. Uh, I'm just proposing we go from twenty thousand six hundred to twenty two thousand. Uh, shop and maintenance supplies, um, modest increase to eighteen thousand, uh, and tools to three thousand. Again, uh, we're just doing more work. Small increase for legal notices, we're taking on more projects, particularly in twenty five. And we noticed that we're having to just put more, uh, notices in the paper. Uh, I'm zeroing out drainage and obstructions. Uh, we were lucky recipients of a, a five million dollar ARPA award to, uh, do some major stormwater, uh, improvements at the airport. So I better not have to spend any money on drainage next year. Um, I posing, I am proposing a large increase in our runway taxiway repairs and maintenance for next year. Normally we're at fifteen five. I'm proposing we go to forty. Uh, I have a large project I have to undertake. We've been putting it off for a couple of years now, but the FAA, uh, is pretty much demanding that we do a rubber removal project. Uh, whenever you see it on TV and the movies, uh, a heavy jet lands on the runway, you see the, the big skid and the puff of smoke. Well, that accumulates over time and our runway has a, a lot of accumulated rubber. And when it rains or snows, uh, it makes that surface much more slippery. And of course it obscures the markings on the runway, so we have to do a rubber removal project. I've been holding them off for a while, but it's probably going to be an issue here. Um, I'm proposing seventy thousand and thirty one thirty for parking lot repairs and maintenance. Uh, this has been on radar for a couple of years now. We have an asphalt parking lot in between the terminal building and the air traffic control tower, which is rapidly deteriorating. Uh, some moderate increases in promotion and advertising and publications dues. This, again, this is just a byproduct of us being more involved and engaged in our outreach and marketing, as of course we try to generate on revenue. Um, we just, that's a line where we're always, we're adding more money into that and just having that programmed at the beginning of the year would be a big help for us. Contractual. Uh, I'm going from twelve five to thirty thousand. Uh, this is something I can edit right here and now. Uh, I was going off of a, a pretty significant estimate, uh, to help us negotiate a complicated lease with Monroe Fire Protection District. Uh, but I have a, a very good quote from, uh, another law firm that can help us do this for, for much less. So, uh, instead of the thirty thousand, I can take that down to seventeen five when we get to that. And in, in capital, um, I have a hundred and two thousand program for a vehicle purchase. Uh, that will be a direct replacement for a, a dump truck, which also does snowplow duty for us. Uh, it's a nineteen eighty three and, um, by all county recommendations, that should have been retired decades ago. Uh, and that's just a direct one for one replacement, a hundred and two thousand.
All right. Let's go to council questions, if you're good. Counselor McKim.
Uh, yeah, actually, I'd just make, uh, well, one quick comment and then a couple of reduction proposals here. Um, the, you remember the, the parking lot repair and maintenance? Or remember that we've been hearing about that for a couple of years and we've convinced them to put this off for a couple of years. So I, you know, I definitely appreciate that, but I, I, I understand that at some point the work actually has to get done. Um, counsel, I move we, uh, amend lines three zero zero six contractual to seventeen thousand five hundred and amend lines four zero zero two, four zero one zero zero, four zero one two zero and four zero one three zero and four zero one five zero to zero.
Second.
Yep. There's a motion to second on that discussion on the proposal for the proposed amendment to what's been offered.
Counselor Iverson.
Uh, for those of us that cannot write quickly, uh, which of, are any of the fours, uh, excluded from the motion?
Just the vehicle purchase. I basically zeroed out everything but the, the, the dump truck that Mr. Laverty made.
Excellent.
And I did call him before, I'm not springing this on him.
What are you talking about? How's this happen? That's what Iverson. Uh, on that dump truck, it is wild that that is still in our inventory, nineteen eighty three?
Nineteen eighty three, we've got more coming too. We'll be back next year.
I, I expect nothing less. I, I hazard to mention, but that's as old as I am. That's an old dump truck.
It's, it's younger than some of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Now we're all thinking about that.
We're not going there.
We've, uh, we, we, we did a, a fifteen year outlook for all of our, our heavy equipment. And, uh, to get us up to date per county guidelines on, on vehicle equipment life, uh, we should be spending in twenty twenty five, we should be spending over three hundred thousand dollars just to get us current. And then once we get to that point, we estimate we would still require approximately a hundred thousand dollars in capital every year at that point from then on to remain current.
For just fleet?
Just for our heavy equipment, our fleet, yep. Heavy equipment, of course, yeah, pickup trucks, though, the entire fleet. And the airport has never done that, yeah. And so we want, and so we end up spending so much more time on maintenance and downtime and we want to get right, but it's going to be an adjustment to get us there. And it'll be, it'll be a process.
And, right, and, but, I mean, we, we do see aviation and the geo bond proposals now, so that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm just new. That's a newer.
That's a newer thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably should have been a long time thing, yes.
Uh, so one of the things that I'm really excited about that, that's happening in the airport is that you're going through a strategic planning process. Do we see that anywhere in this budget here?
No, you don't. That's the, the master plan process you're referring to is a, is a, is mostly funded by the FAA. We were pretty fortunate to get that that approved, uh, so we don't have to support that with our operating budget.
That's great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really looking forward to that and that's gonna, that's gonna yield some fruit for us for years to come, for sure.
And hopefully more FAA dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
May it rain.
We do need to vote on the underlying amendment, just to make sure we don't forget that. Uh, any other discussion on that?
Sorry.
All right, let's do that. Uh, all those in favor of that amendment as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's an amended motion. Now back to the underlying budget. Other questions or comments from councilors? We're good? Okay. All right, with that, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr.
Could you tell me what the bottom line was?
I'm working on it.
Oh, well, we voted on something, we don't know what the bottom line.
Well.
Can we just hold on?
They're going to be in recess for two minutes while we respond to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For recess, while staff figured out some things that we needed to proceed, Michelle.
The, um, bottom line for the entire fund for aviation is one million seven twenty four two fifty one.
Yep. All right. That completes the aviation department's request. We'll move on to the recorder.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand dash zero 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 four general fund recorder with a category request of personnel, four hundred two thousand eighty three dollars, supplies zero, services zero, capital zero for a total budget of four hundred two thousand eighty three dollars.
Second.
All right, we want to welcome Mabye Swain, our recorder. It's good to see you.
Good to see all of you as well.
Right. We'll welcome you to make any comments on this that help you to do, uh, to explain it to us.
So there's not really a big change on the, uh, general fund, other than to restore the one full time position back into county general from the perpetuation fund. We moved it last year as our part to help push through the eight and a half percent COLA increase. Um, as a result, that does slightly affect in, uh, self insurance, FICA and perf. Other than that, everything is the same with the exception of one oh one five one. We did have change of personnel, so that drops back down to a new hire or a one year, um, salary amount. So that amount is actually less than the previous year, than this year. And that's really all on the, the county general fund. On the contractual fund, there's no change at all. This This is identity security protection. So when we redact.
We haven't moved to that one yet.
I'm sorry.
We're still on the first one. Thank you.
We're still on general fund.
Okay.
See what we've got. Questions or comments from that? And I see Counsel Wiltz.
Yes. So when, I'm not sure if I should wait to ask this question because it's about the, the perpetuation fund and the moving of the, salary. And we did the split last year. Do, is it necessary to move the salary all the way back in for this year?
I'm just restoring it to what it was in previous years.
Is there a problem like balance wise in the other fund?
No.
Okay. And, and revenue wise, it, it could support it if we needed to do that again?
That's up for discussion.
Other questions or comments? I thought I saw Counselor McKim.
Yeah, actually mine, mine essentially the same question. What, what is the balance of the perpetuation fund?
I don't know the exact amount right now. I wasn't prepared to give that.
Actually, the auditor sounds like she's.
Yeah, I have that for you. It's one million five hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Okay, so it's very, very, very healthy.
I appreciate last year, your work with us and, and doing that, which.
Glad to do so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I have a question that this may be one of those I ask a dumb question, you all tell me. I know they're at zero, but why are there voter registration clerk lines in that budget? And this may not be for the recorder even at all.
What happened when we, um, and I say we, when the council approved the, uh, new setup for the job descriptions with WIS, it changed titles. And so, um, we had departments across the board sharing a, um, an account line called deputy. So we went through and renumbered or in renamed a few of them. So this one, uh, this one zero zero eleven and thirteen used to be called deputy. We have renamed it voter registration, but in past years it was just called deputy. So it will eventually drop off because she's not using that. It's just, I think it was in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two when we changed it. So it, it will disappear.
Just naturally it'll fall off?
Yeah. She's not spinning anything out of it. It, it'll just fall off.
I'm happy to see it at zero. I will say from a, like a public looking in, it is, it, it could lead to confusion and/or consternation and/or conspiracy. So.
Why?
If that drop off sooner rather than later, that would be the worst thing probably for.
Can we just remove it?
It, if you delete it out, then your totals in twenty twenty-two, um, are skewed because this is what was spent as a deputy in the recorder's office. So yeah, we reassign numbers and it's just, it's things that will eventually disappear.
Well, all right, we've got that down. Maybe long-term, we think about an asterisk that goes down at the bottom. They offer some brief accounting kind of description, but we don't have to solve that right now. Any other questions for the recorder on this general budget? Okay, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson. Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
I didn't pass.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero to one abstained.
Right. Let's now, help me remember. Let's move on to item B for the recorder.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund eleven sixty dash zero 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 identification, security protection with a category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services eighteen thousand dollars, capital zero for a total budget of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
All right. Recorder, you want to add any comments on this one?
Again, there's no change in the budget from this year to next year. The fluctuations in this budget sometimes are based on redaction needed for personal information like social security numbers. That's what the phone was created for. It's all by state code and the fluctuations are based on when we do digitizing of back files. We're back to the late nineteen sixties on deeds, um, as an example.
Questions from counselors. Counselor Iverson.
That's the update I wanted to hear on this one was how far back digitization has gone. So that's, that's exciting that it's gone back that far already.
Right. And that's on deeds. On other documents, we're back to the, uh, early nineties. So, but deeds are a priority.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Any at all? All right. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote on this item.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
For Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that'll take us to item C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund twelve seventeen dash zero 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 zero. County elected officials training with the category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services twenty thousand dollars, capital zero for a total budget of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Right. So this year I actually increased the budget for this. This goes beyond just my department. It's the elected officials that are designated by code. And we have also added, uh, county council to that. And so that was the reason for the two thousand dollar increase for this year based on current expenditures with the Association of Indiana Counties, uh, training coming up this fall for a state called meeting. We are on target to stay within that twenty thousand. If there are, is any discussion or any request for additional from that, I'm open to that. The, the reserve is such that we could sustain that, but, um, it looks like we're good for this year. And so I budgeted flat for next year.
All right, let's go to questions, comments from counselors. Not seeing any on that. Good? All right, we'll go to a roll call vote on this item.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, and that I believe is the last item for the recorder. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Let's move on to item number seven, and this is, uh, review the sheriff's office budget requests.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand dash zero 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 five, general fund. Sheriff with the category request of personnel, six million two hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. And the supplies, three hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Services, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred twenty dollars, capital zero for a total budget of six million eight hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Right. We want to welcome Sheriff Marte. Good to see you. Chief Deputy Parker and Ms. John came back to the council here and we'll turn it over to you. Any comments you want to make on this budget request?
Yes, thank you. Before I turn the table over to, uh, the chief and Jamie, um, by the year, it's been now by the year and, and what, eight months since we took over. And I have to say, I want to thank, personally thank the council for the actual budget that was provided to us. Because we couldn't have done, uh, the, the, a lot of the things that we have accomplished without the support of the council. And that's, um, as I was thinking this through this morning, when we were doing, going over the budget. One of the things is that, that, you know, for the merit side and also the people that worked in front office, without the equipment that, uh, is provided to them, they couldn't do public service. Without being properly trained, they couldn't be out there protecting us as well. So that's very crucial for us that, that they receive their best that they can to do the very best job that they know that we could do. But again, that could not have been possible without the support of the council. So I thank you for that. The team has gotten together and, and worked really hard to, to propose to you what they put together. We know you have questions of us, so we'll try to answer all the questions that we can for you. That being said.
Poor Jamie's gonna handle the bulk of this. But just to start off with, it, it's, it's kind of hard to separate these two budgets because they, um, they intertwine whether we want them to or not to a certain extent. So one of the things that you have seen, and I know you have questions about, is some of the things that we have placed in the budget, uh, that may have been funded elsewhere, uh, that you're seeing appear in the budget this year. Now, we met this morning and I think, uh, Jamie's gonna start right off with a few things that we have reduced pretty substantially. And I guess we can go with questions from there, but, um, when, when we kind of wrap this thing down here, I want to give you some updates on the commissary fund and the, the medical, uh, line item that we're going to experience some issues with. So, uh, it's not all bad news, but it, it may appear to be, but we've done quite a bit of work here with the last even two weeks. And I, I think we'll be able to massage a few things and, and get us to a place where we're a little more comfortable. But, um, we definitely need to bring them to your attention tonight so that you're aware of what we're looking at going into, uh, twenty twenty, uh, five and twenty twenty-six even. So Jamie, if you want to go through the budget and, and whatever you want to get right off the top here, then I guess we can just answer your questions.
I guess we'll start off with line item, um, three one five four zero, our general communications. Um, we met today and we decided that we did not need the amount of money that we had originally requested. The hundred and fifty thousand, um, we only need approximately hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So we can decrease that.
So this is line.
Can you pull your mic a little closer or speak a little louder?
Yeah. Better?
No.
Three one five one zero.
Three one five four zero. The general communications.
From one fifty down to one.
Twenty-four six.
One twenty-four six. Gotcha.
That's one of the things in there, um, what we are doing are moving some of the items from the commissary fund that are normally paid out of there and putting them into the budget for both the sheriff's side and the jail side. And one of the big items in there is FLOC and the app, the iPhone Android app that we actually use for the, the sheriff's office. Those are two really big items. Also. What do we got here? That's the only really big one from the general fund for us that we're going to decrease. The other one is in the PS lit fund. Okay.
Gotcha.
All right. So counsel, um, unless no one else wants to make this motion, I can offer that, but before I do, I just want to make sure there's no other.
Yeah, well, we, we may make other motions to reduce, but I'll take the easy one first.
Yeah, I'll ask unanimous consent to reduce line one thousand three one five four zero down to one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. Counsel Wiltz.
Down, okay, down to, I'm just reading. Sorry, I'm trying to catch up. Down to one twenty-four. Got it.
Yeah, it was a one fifty down to one twenty-four, six hundred. All right. Any objections to that unanimous consent? I'll just offer that. If none, so ordered. Okay, so that one is down. Thank you. All right, any, so now we can go to, you all are good with questions or comments on this budget? All right, let's see what we got. Counsel McKim.
Yeah, um, on deputies overtime, a hundred thousand dollars. That's still a, I know it says unforeseen events. I, I wonder if that's maybe higher than it needs to be. What do you think? What's the?
We already spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars so far this year in overtime. Just from the two of the major events that we've already had. So that's why we upped it just a little bit more just in case we do have some more protests or anything that's like that.
So that, when you, what you're referring to is the IU protests.
IU protests, yeah, Dunn Meadow or anything else going on. Yes.
You should put the note on.
Right?
I think those were events now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we did have the eclipse in there and I know it, I know it fizzled out, but you know, manpower was still allocated because you know, when, when we got that morning, we knew what was going to happen. So that one, that would take a pretty good chunk to be honest with you.
Honestly, the minute you did, don't do that, it'd be the greatest case study in every intro to criminal.
You are correct.
We don't want that. We don't want that. Rather have. Counsel Iverson.
I mean, that being said, are there things on your radar that you're tracking that are coming down the pike? Whether it's a natural event like an eclipse or something larger than a home basketball game? That you can talk about?
Well, not, not in particular, uh, let's see, how do I do this? It, we, we have an election year here. Things look to be volatile. So, uh, you know, I think we'd be foolish if we didn't at least anticipate that, you know, we may have some issues that we need to address, you know, from a law enforcement, law enforcement standpoint. Not to mention the fact that, um, and I, I hate to even bring this up here, but, um, we are once again facing a deficit in our, uh, staffing levels. Uh, we're, we're down four at this point. We just, we just hired, we just hired four and, you know, we, we've got, uh.
Boy, that's a roller coaster.
Yeah, it, it is. Uh, and it's, and, and I'm, I'm telling you, it, it's, that, that field right now is just so unstable that, uh, it's not because of our pay or our benefits or our work environment. I, I, it's just the way the thing moves. So when you're down, you know, three and four, uh, I guess it's better than seven or eight, but you still have to, you have shift shortages that you have to fill. And, um, so we're looking forward to, you know, shift shortages at least in the first, I'd say half of the year because we've kind of run our course with laterals. So the process we're running as we speak will, those will be individuals that will come in, you know, fresh off the street. They'll have to go to the academy. They'll go through FTO training. So there's more time investment there. So I think between those two things is, is kind of where we settled on that number. And I, you know, it's, it's somewhat of, uh, a shot in the dark and we understand that and we understand your questions and, that's the best explanation we can give you, uh, for that, unless you've got something, Dan Sheriff.
We, we, we're still thinking back what happened in Dunn Street and, and that still hasn't, uh, that, that was a hard hit for us. And, uh, in fact, we, Chief and I drove by there yesterday just to see, you know, just get the feel of the atmosphere. And I tell you that it, it concerns me because it has not gone away in, in, in my estimate. So we're trying to think ahead as much as we can, so we don't have to come back and surprise you. But that, that is a concern of ours. And at the same time, like the chief said, it's kind of very hard for us in our line of work to predict when it's going to be an urgency, you know? I mean, if the weather goes awry like it has before and we had to be out there, it's very difficult for us to kind of really have a crystal ball and tell you. So we're trying to, try to think ahead of the game as much as we can.
Counselor Wiltz.
Regarding that same line, the far column on, on what we're seeing is the total expended so far this year? Is that, and that's at fifty-eight thousand.
That's as of June thirtieth. That's not current.
Half a year.
That's a half a year. Okay, okay. And so s- since June thirtieth, that's gone up by fifty thousand dollars. And so since June 30th, that's gone up by $50,000 is what you're saying. So we have to run the number. July, August, in two months, we did $50,000 of overtime?
I'll, I'll pull it up and see where they're at on that.
I'm just trying to understand the numbers.
Okay, at some point, they made an adjustment of $30,000 into that line. So the total budget for that account line is $110,000. They have expended, as of today's date, $68,749.
That makes more sense now, doesn't it? Okay.
They have a remaining balance in that account line of $41,250.
You know, as much as I appreciate planning for the unexpected to some extent, given the the nature of overtime and I think our need to really understand how that's being used, I would feel more comfortable perhaps with having a lower amount in the overtime account and asking you to do either in-house transfer or come back for an additional if needed, just to kind of keep us updated on how and why overtime is being used. That's just one person's take on it.
And I'm asking, asking here, I think we expended 102 last year. Is that, is that right, Kim?
Yes, it was 108 for 2023. Oh, the budget was 108 and you expended 102.
All of those.
The budget was 108 and expended 102.
Which makes sense.
So, so I think what we have on there is 100 for this year. So I guess we've, we budgeted 108, spent 102, so we're trying to stay pretty close to that. So we, we dropped it down from 2,000 of what we spent last year as our best guess, if that makes sense.
Other comments? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, and perhaps I'm wrong, but I thought we were told that once you were fully staffed, that you wouldn't have to use the overtime as often. So I think many of us thought we were going to see a decrease in that overtime line. And it really isn't going to hurt you whatsoever if we decrease it because you can move within the same category, don't even have to come to us, you just move it around. And then if you run short, you can always ask for an additional. Perhaps you've already heard that we are more than a million short. Could you make up that whole million for us?
With you.
And that's before we talk about any raises or any new people.
Well, you know, it was certainly our wish that we, if we were, our first wish would be fully staffed for for a multitude of reasons. One of which is, is when you're fully staffed, use less overtime. It, I mean, it's, the math's pretty simple. The fact of the matter is, we are not. So we looked at our last year's expenditures, we looked at our last year's budget. We, you know, we budgeted 108, we spent 102. We thought it was reasonable to put 100 in there. I understand, I think the sheriff does too, the ability to move. I would just, I would just caution us that with four vacancies, that we will be struggling to fill. I hope we can have those filled and those guys on the road, those newbies on the road by, you know, June or so. That's optimistic, but hopefully we'll we'll have that done. And that will help us with our overtime budget when those slots are full and the people are out there taking the calls and we're not having to fill shift minimums with overtime. But I will tell you, filling shift minimums when you are four people down is a pretty frequent occurrence. So we'll be dealing with it one way or the other. It's just a frequent occurrence when you're that many down.
Counselor McKim.
Well, I guess, okay, so it's clear that you would not be comfortable with a reduction in the overtime. Is there something else we could reduce in either the supplies or services instead that would make? Because some of those went up quite a bit. I mean, office supplies, that went up quite a bit. I just wonder if there's some some things there that may be less sensitive.
Before we move off that topic, and this is, this is again me asking, when you have vacancies, those are, those, those salaries are funded. Obviously, those salaries are not expended for the first year. If they'll, if that money's available, I, you know, trying to follow what Kate's saying here. If we, if we start running short of overtime, that may be an easy avenue for us to move those monies and use them for overtime because we're certainly going to have overages in salaries. That, that, that's going to happen for a good portion of this year, at least for the first quarter. You know, if we're lucky. Like I said, we hope to have them filled by the end of the first quarter. The salaries are going to be encumbered, but they won't be on the road, but that doesn't matter in terms of what we're talking about here. So is that a better option for us?
I mean, yes, because you will accumulate money that can be transferred there if you have any vacancies at all.
What are, what would you look to 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 reduce that by? And then we could thereby use those salaries and and not. All I want to be is honest with you that we're going to be using overtime. If, if we've got the funds that we can move from the vacant salary lines, then that's fine with us.
Absolutely.
Kate, do you want to make a motion?
Not knowing what others were expecting, I am agreeing with Counselor Hawke that I was hoping to see a little bit of a decrease. I would suggest maybe decreasing that from 100,000 back down to 80, which was that original from last year. And, and kind of hope that that'll sustain you with the moving around of salary that's not spent. So I move that we do that, reduce it to 80?
Second. So we've got a motion and a second and discussion on this proposal. One thing I'll do that I always like about this kind of thing is that we're literally sitting here with the department, talking about a vital issue of both vacancies and overtime very tentatively, which I think is time well spent on this. So I appreciate the fact, anything that extends that into a manageable process. I know that's probably a real bureaucratic way to describe it, but if we got this many eyes on four vacancies and overtime, that is good attention to it. Counselor Hawke.
Are we having a vote now on the overtime line?
Yeah.
I'll call the motion.
Well, let me make sure no one else had any other comments before we do. Was there anyone else that wished to make a comment on that? Okay, now I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
A roll call on that.
This is an amendment.
Okay.
You can.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Oh, and before she does that, just please note that when we make this adjustment, it's also going to affect the FICA. So we will be adjusting the FICA amount as well, so.
Sounds good.
Counselar Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Oh.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Amendment passes six to one.
All right, so we've got the amended budget underneath. Other discussion, Counsel McKim.
Yes, on the sheriff's pension line, so that has, that looks like it's about $50,000 different, less than in the McCready and Keen study for, I'm curious if that's just because did some of the assumptions change or is it just get recalculated based on the the salaries or do you have any idea?
You mean less?
Well, less than was in the study. I don't mean reduce from, remember, this includes the new proposal, right? That we heard the detailed presentation on.
Yes.
Right, and that was based on.
That, yeah, that's why I'm trying to figure out.
Right, and that was based on the McCree and Kitty, or McCready and Keen study, which recommended for 25, 2025, said that the cost of that plan would be And I just want to make sure that there's a reason for that having gone down from what was in the study and that we still are talking about actually funding the the share, the proposed pension change.
Well, when, when we had that meeting, what, what we had proposed to do in that meeting was, I think we all agreed it was a budgetary issue.
Yeah.
So we were going to submit the, that, that request that included as if we had agreed to that amendment.
Right.
So that's what you're seeing there now. If it's, if it's lower than that, that's a.
What they submitted to us.
Unless you've got something different.
I'm just looking at that report that they, that we had been given that night. I mean, maybe it's not a big deal. It's not a large amount difference. It's like $50,000. I just want to make sure if we pass it, we're not underfunding a pension.
And are we looking at two separate reports? One is One America, one is the report that Mr. McKim's looking at?
We shall all have the same reporter, so I'm, I'm kind of confused on that myself, to be honest with you, Counsel.
All right.
So maybe we should take the amount that you're looking at if you're inclined to do it.
I like the lower amount.
So that, after all that, that is in the budget request as we talked about. That's it.
Correct.
Okay. It is. Counselor Hawke, I saw your hand.
Right, I, you know, if I could get this across, I think we should table this portion of the budget because we discussed that as sort of a pie in the sky kind of a thing at the time. And it was like, well, we're not going to decide anything now. We'll decide all that at budget time. And now it sounds like it's have Councilmember, Mayor McKim thinks this is a reduction, when in fact it's $230,000 more this year. That's a.
I think it's a reduction. Wait, what?
It's a decrease in the increase.
So you thought it was a reduction from what you thought it was going to be?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at any rate, for the public to know, it's actually an increase of what, $230,000, which is quite a bit of an increase when we're talking about trying to balance this out. And so I don't think we should just close our eyes to this and say, yeah, that sounds good. I mean, is this really something we can afford? Because the pension changes they're talking about, it requires what, the merit board to agree to it, correct?
The merit board has voted and agreed. We came to the council.
I can't hear.
We decided it was a budget issue. We all agreed to put it in the budget. Then if it passed the budget, we would bring the amendment to the council for adoption. So this is the second in, we didn't want to get the cart before the horse. The amendment has to have, be have funding behind it before we sign the amendment. So if, if, if this isn't approved in the budget, then it's essentially killed. There's no sense of bringing amendment here without funding to to back it up.
Right, does everybody remember exactly what was discussed?
Well, we said it's a budgetary consideration.
They are following the instructions.
They, they are.
But, but normally you would know, $230,000, you would want to know what changes. And, and so I think it's only reasonable to ask that question. And it had to do with early retirement, if I'm remembering correctly, and that we could get more people coming over from other departments if we gave them early retirement out. But, but since it was a budgetary question, I don't think we looked at, or maybe you all understood this, how quickly, what, is it like a five-year out if they, it's top five years, right? Of income, but, but they can retire earlier without as many services. You won't tell me exactly what it said. Does everybody else?
No, and I don't know that that's our job. I want to bring this back to the, the, the budget item and not to saying yes. To, but let me speak candidly here because I think there's a lot of deputies watching this in jail personnel. I said at the time, this will be a budget consideration based on all the factors that factor into a budget. If I'm being candid right now, and I look at a $1.2 million budget deficit, I do not believe that this priority from this vantage point of this council position, just this one, I don't believe that this priority is going to make it into a final budget at this stage. However, what I heard Counselor Hawke say earlier is that there might be a need to table that to see if there are other changes to this budget where it could come in. And that might be a wise course. But for the dollar amount and the other increases that we're seeing in this budget with the deficit, I'm not sure that this one will make it in there. And I want to be fully candid with that so that we're not playing games or, but again, that's just this one position here. But yeah, we're in the budget now discussing that. Other discussion, Counsel Iverson.
I'm going to take this into a new direction. So I'm going to, I want to ask about a different line here. Is that all right with you, Mr. President?
Absolutely fine.
All right. So one of the incentives that we have to recruit new folks into your department is the education incentive. There is a slight increase there. Can you talk about, is that because there were new folks coming in with that education? Or is this a hope for us to recruit new people?
Our new deputies that we've hired have education. They have, you know, either associates or bachelor degrees or masters, so that's for them to offset the cost for them.
And you think going forward into the next fiscal year that that's going to additionally and be helpful to recruit additional individuals?
Absolutely.
Okay. We want to provide the tools that you need to ride this roller coaster of staffing, so that's why I'm asking.
Just very much. One comment here, if, if I may. The, the process to amend the trust is pretty clear. The merit board, the council, council's approval. Obviously, if it's a funding issue, it has to have, it's, it's kind of bifurcated at this stage. But what, what I'm, what I'm finding a little exception to here is we, we did this process here, we went to the merit board, we got their approval. We came here, we brought the professionals from McCready and Keen down here, explained exactly what this was. And here we are today hashing it out like, what is this, what does this do? Well, I, I don't know what else we can do, but to, the documents were brought here, there was a very, very detailed explanation. If it's a funding issue, I understand that. But when I, when we've done all of that, we went through the exercise here and it's, what is this about? Then, then why did we go through the exercise? If it's a funding issue, I get it.
Yeah, and my comments are coming from the, the funding side of the ledger.
I understand that because we, we gave the explanation of what it was and what it did and, and who it affected. And all of those things, we understand the budget. And if that's the issue, that's the issue. But for crying out loud, I don't know what else we can do if we, if we come in here with a. know what else we can do if we, if we come in here with a, with, you know, McCready and Keen with their actuary to explain exactly what this process is. I don't know what else we can do to defeat that because it was pretty clear to me what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay.
I'll throw it to the council. What is the, there's been a couple of things thrown out, tabling it, accepting it, not accept. I'll, I'll open it to the will of the council. Counselor McKim?
Well, remember that none of, none of these votes are final anyway. This is just an expression of the moment, you know, the, the, kind of the will of the council at this point in the, in the process. And we have to make it through everything before we really can be clear that what, what we're able to fund. So I, you know, I, I guess I'm not sure what tabling this would do because we can always bring it back anyway, even if we don't table it. If we can bring it back by the end, if we haven't met a number that, you know, that can get four votes. Personally, I, I am in support of this increase and this change to the pension plan. You know, I think, I think it is a valuable recruitment and retention tool. And I would like to see it. But I also understand Counselor Hawks and everybody else's, Counselor Deckard's concern about the overall budget and in particular about our desire to provide a, a cost of living increase to employees.
So ongoing discussion. I am Counselor Hawk.
Right. I, I think it would be really disingenuous for us to look at our county employees and say, well, we can't give you a raise at all because we've spent too much on one line or the other line or whatever. And folks, you all want us to treat everybody fairly. I know you do. And so I just, I just think that if we're going to just close our eyes and go ahead and say yes to this, say you're, then you're saying no to other raises for maybe the rest of the, of the other departments, whatever. But what would happen if we put it in at this year's amount? And then if we can come up with the money at the end of the time, we can call them back and add it back in. At least they'd have something in there. Just trying to figure out some way to get to the end of the day, what that we've done, the best we can do.
And it may not all be answered today on all that.
Probably not.
Counselor Iverson and then Wiltz.
And just for, for context, Deputy Fuller sent that report to us way back in July, on July 18th. So we've been sitting on this One America report for two months, a month and a half here. So I, I mean, we've had ample time to consider the fiscal impact for county government. And again, I, I, I do take Mr. McKim's point that today we are not adopting a budget. Today, we are simply saying, okay, we have heard this information and, and then we can move forward with further analysis should we need it. I also understand that even though a number of us are actually looking at this report on our laptops, maybe not all council members have the same access. And, and I'm wondering if, if there might be a disconnect there in terms of access to information.
It could be. I, I just want to be clear on my comments. I am not prepared myself to articulate and define all the things in that report, but I felt like I received the information I needed to receive that day.
That's fair. That, I, when we came to this hearing, I, I did not bring that because I thought that the merits of it had been hashed out. This was simply the budget discussion. The merits had already been hashed out. We, we knew what it was going to do. The answer was, can we fund it? Yes or no?
Yeah. And I mean, literally Counselor McKim's looking at the report. It's right there. I can see it. So other discussion, Counselor Wiltz.
So I was not at the meeting when the presentation took place. I do have a copy of the report and I have looked at it. And forgive me if it's in there and I'm just not remembering, but this is, this is obviously something that would be beneficial in recruitment. It would be beneficial for your managing of retirees and, and just sort of the process of, of succession planning for everybody. If we keep it the same now, these data that are in the report still hold true next year and could be presented at any point, should, should we decide? I mean, like, like was suggested, it might come back later this year. But this, I guess my, my question is if we decide, okay, we really have to hold off on this because of budget. Just like with the airports parking lot, and he came back three years in a row with the same request. This could come back and the numbers would be similar. Or at least the logic of the numbers would be similar with some increases perhaps for cost of living. Am I, is that right, generally speaking? And I'm asking just anyone who has an opinion. I don't know.
Well, Counselor Crossley.
I was just going to say that, I guess to clarify to Counselor Wiltz's point, is this reminiscent of almost what we did a couple of years ago where things had to come back when we had to talk about the merit increases for deputies? Is that along the same lines? Is that what I'm hearing?
We were doing, yeah, we were doing that into the wee hours of the holidays, as I recall.
Correct.
I, not an actuary. I, I, I mean, the merits of what we would present would be the same. And based upon, you know, your population, the age of your population, you know, the your, the, the older, you know, individual gets, the closer they come to retirement. So as people regress to that, you might see an uptick in that just a bit because that act, that arc, that actuarial required contribution is based upon the promise of benefits for the future. So it, it would change. I don't know how significantly it would change. But, but again, I mean, it's, it's, it's our job to advocate for our officers and what we see for them and their futures and how we can recruit and how we can retain and how long their shelf life is and all of those things. And that's what this is about. But I understand you have a, you've got a job to do too. And, you know, there's, there are other things that I would discuss about this, but that, that will come, you know, when the funding decision is made to or not to. So, yeah, I, I don't want you to think we're here twisting your arms, but you know, we're, we're advocating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair.
All right. Other, any other comments? If not, we'll go to a, or motion, we'll go to a roll call on this. If otherwise, no other comments.
Okay. So on what? On just?
Accepting the, the budget as presented and offered. Yeah. Yeah.
I have another question on a completely different line.
Okay. That's fine.
Regarding in supply, no, services. Yes. No, sorry. Um, yes. Maintenance, training, travel. We've got some, um, maintenance is not much. There were a couple of things here and maybe I need to scroll down. Not to animal control because that's not where it is. I'm looking in the, in the twenties. Fuel inflation, I get it. Computer supplies is a 50% increase because of inflation. That just seems like a lot because I don't think that's on par with the rate of inflation. And we've got a 30,000 increase for fuel. I get it. You guys need the fuel. I get it. I am all about that. But it's just a lot. And if the only reason is inflation, it seems a little bit out of sync to me. So I'm just looking at, at that perhaps as an area of savings.
We could decrease the computer supplies. I don't really feel comfortable with the fuel with this, you know, it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week with them driving everywhere. And we don't know what the cost of fuel is going to be.
And again, after six months, you've spent less than 100,000 on fuel. Granted, it could go up, but you could also ask us for more money. I don't know. Anyone else feeling this?
Counsel, I'm going to reduce computer supplies from 15,000 to 10,000.
Second.
We've got a motion on reducing computer supplies. Any discussion on that? All right. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that we have a line reduction. Or discussion or, or motions?
Like to reduce the pension to remain stable at 1,4,528.
Is, is that the arc that was recommended?
I have no idea because I wasn't here.
Here, here's, I would exercise caution here. We need to look at the actuarial valuation submitted by McCready and Keen to make sure what that, that number was, because I know we added the, we added that 200 on it. So whatever that number is, if you're going to reduce it, I would just caution in using that, that report.
Yeah. The, the report would say 1,088,831.
Open to that.
Totally fine if we reduce it to what Jeff McKim just said.
And that's just in the 2025 valuation of the McCready and Keen report.
Is that, is that the minimum or is that the?
Recommended.
Recommended. Okay.
Can you repeat that number?
So if I'm hearing it right, we have a motion from Counselor Wiltz to reduce that on the 1,088. And what was the change again?
831.
131?
831.
831. All right. So there's a motion on that from Counselor Wiltz. Is there a second on that motion?
Second. Second.
Okay. There's now a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I would invite you to look at the last three years on this potential line to see what the increase has been every year. And I mean, we were told at the state level that we were all going to be seeing a problem with sheriff's pension. So it, you know, it is not completely unheard of here. It is just that this was just such a big chunk when we live, when we know we're way over the dollar amount. And so I'm looking at those big chunks. But I agree with what, what she had to offer. And then if, if we can come up with the money before the budget session is over or even after, then let's try it then.
Counselor Iverson?
I, I understand the budgetary constraints that we're, we're facing in this budget, but I'll be voting no on this motion. And my rationale is that we had over 20 of our employees in this room from this department staring us in the, the face and saying, we not only have this report, this has gone to the board and been approved, but in this competitive labor environment, this is the difference between working in Monroe County or working somewhere else. It's the difference between me retiring in this community or it's the difference between me retiring in a different community. In my mind, what is being proposed here is an economic development. It is a quality of life difference for almost an entire department here. So that, that is my rationale.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor McKim?
And just, yeah, I won't be supporting this motion either, although I appreciate the kind of intent behind it. And, you know, it's, it's, I think we do, like I said before, we recognize that all decisions are kind of provisional until we actually adopt a budget. But yeah, I, I, at this point, I think this is a tool, retention, recruitment and morale tool that I think is worth the additional money. So.
Just to add to that, the officer, one of the officers that we're about ready to lose is going to Westfield, probably within the next month or so.
Yeah.
Counselor Crossley?
Just going to say, um, I don't, I guess the whole feel of not supporting, um, like law enforcement, I don't, I don't think that holds weight with us at all. So I, I'd kind of rebuke a couple of points that were made there. But Counselor Iverson, I, I don't think that we are trying to say that we're not valuing our law enforcement and we're not trying to hear them. I think from what I hear from Counselor Wilson, Counselor Hawk is, we just really want to make sure that we can get by through everything in our budget. And we already know that this isn't final or anything like that. We just really need to make sure that we're doing our homework and our due diligence. And yes, that report has been out there for a while. However, we really just need to make sure that we are not overexerting ourselves. And as a person who has, you know, supported law enforcement in return in a lot of different ways, especially with increases, I'm not definitely saying that we can't go with the recommended amount. I'm just saying, for me and my vote and why I would vote in favor of this amendment is I just feel comfortable with just getting through everything. So that's, that's my stance.
Thank you.
I, I'll just hover, anyone else? And I'll hover a couple of final comments on the, I, I, what I said earlier, it was a candid assessment based on what I'm seeing with the budget. And if that should change, I got an open door to it. I just, I'm, I always try to be, I sometimes think I'm exceedingly optimistic. I'm not so optimistic on the, these numbers. And so I'm not necessarily seeing this. However, work in progress and we'll see where we get. All right. So with that, we've got the amendment. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call on the amendment from Counselor Wiltz.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Okay, thank you. So we've got now the underlying budget. Any further discussion on that? All right. So we'll do a roll call on accepting that budget. Yeah.
I was going to say, do you, do you want to know what the new category total is? So just give me a moment on that.
Yeah. So we'll take a second here to get that category total.
I'm ready to hear.
Anything else about this? They've only spent 94.
Me too.
And that's, that's traditional.
Maybe 200.
What are we going to do? We have got to.
It'd be nice to say yes to everybody. That's my.
Mr. President, would you do a gentle reminder to council that the mics are still hot?
Yeah, counselors, I, I just want to, your, your, your mics are on and, and the transcription's capturing that while we wait. So just FYI.
Okay. The new bottom line for the personnel is 6,054,161.
Everybody got that?
No, sorry.
Say it one more time.
One more time. Sorry.
You made an amendment in the supplies. So that new bottom line is 33,700.
Can't be right.
No, we didn't do anything in that one, did we? Oh, yes, we did. So did I get that one correct?
We just decreased computer supplies, I think.
Five.
Oh.
That was 21,003.
And this, yeah, I reduced that one to, it was, yeah, it was at 20 and now it's at 10. So what is, yeah. Got it. So that's the 33. So that one, that one's right. And then we reduced the general communication. You got to go down to the threes. Two, three, one, five, 40. We reduced that. So what is that grand total? Yep. 20. That one is correct. So what is the new bottom line? Okay. So the new bottom line for general fund for the sheriff is 6,638,981.
Right. So with that, if there's no further discussion or comments, we could go to a roll call vote on the. vote on the budget, accepting the budget to move forward.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Could I ask staff to tell the difference between the total that we just passed on this? And or just tell us what this year's is and then what we're proposing? Or even what we started out last year and what we just spent? Because I think we need to
Well, what do you want? You want a comparison?
Been very good to the sheriff's department.
Do you want a comparison of twenty twenty-four to the new total? Or do you want a comparison of twenty twenty-four to the new?
Four to the new total of what they propose and what's been passed for this would be how much? I I just want to remind folks that this council has really been good to law enforcement. And I have always been one hundred percent. And we've got a lot of departments to think about.
That total is one hundred ninety-six thousand five twenty-five from the twenty twenty-four to the new current request.
Hey. That's a lot of money.
And so with that, we will move on, if that's okay, to the next budget item.
Council, I move to open for Discussion and Review Fund one thousand dash zero six two six, General Fund Animal Control with a category request of Personnel, two hundred fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars. Supplies, twenty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Services, three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Capital, twenty thousand dollars for a total budget of six hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, anything on the animal control budget?
The only change that I have is I received the interlocal yesterday. So that amount did change. Sorry, I didn't have that beforehand. So three five zero four zero, the paperwork that I received says that it'll be four hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty cents.
Round it up.
So four thirty-three one twenty-three.
Okay.
That's all I move. We adjust line three five zero four zero, Animal Shelter Interlocal to four hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars.
Second.
And I believe this is the time when we try to start saying, well, how did they know they were Monroe County stores?
That docks from Bowland County, I swear. Alright, every time.
And how do we know they weren't? Now it's there.
Alright, other other anything else that you wanted to add? I apologize. I
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, questions or comments from council?
We should vote on. We just need to vote on that.
The amendment?
Yeah, alright. We've got an amendment with a second. Any further discussion? If not, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so it's adopted. Any comments or questions on the underlying budget? Okay, let's go to a roll call on accepting that.
I think we're gonna, yeah.
Pardon me, yeah. So the bottom line now. While she figures it up, we want to thank Kim Shell for doing this live in the meeting and on live TV, too. Helpful. Ms. Turner King, did you have something? No? Okay.
Okay, um, the new category total for the services is four three four one twenty-three, and the total for the entire fund is six ninety-five four sixty-nine.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? I know counselors are looking at it. Alright. And we go to a roll call on that.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Alright, just for the note, we're gonna do the public safety lit and I'm gonna give a stretch so counselors and staff can use the restroom. Alright, item C.
Council, I move to open for Discussion and Review Fund eleven seventy dash zero 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 five, Public Safety Lit Sheriff with a category request of Personnel, one million six hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. And the supplies, sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Services, fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. Capital, ninety-five thousand dollars. For a total budget of one million eight hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, make another amendment for account four seven one zero zero. This was another one we were going to decrease to fifty-two thousand.
So from eighty to fifty-two?
Correct.
Okay.
Council so moved.
Any further discussion on the amendment to reduce the line? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're back down to this bottom line. Anything else you wanted to add on this or?
In this line, it's just another one that we are moving items from the commissary fund into the budgetary.
Counselors, comments or questions?
Um, I
Please.
So all through here, I see stuff that's being moved either to or from commissary. And I missed, I believe there was a report on commissary just recently to us, and I think I missed that. I think I missed a lot, apparently, that one meeting. What is the logic of moving these items back and forth? Real quick, just summary. I'm gonna let Chief Parker talk about that. Okay.
He is bashing out the IC code. There are certain items that we are allowed to use commissary funds for. There are by statute, there are certain items we cannot. But the chief is going to also inform you about the an actual legislation that's coming down down the pike as well that I don't think the council is aware of as of yet.
Like walk into your prepared, like, they're gonna ask this question and we are here the handouts.
The it it it's kind of to be fair to you, when we first took office, you know, there were certain things that by by law we just cannot do. And we're trying to rectify what was 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 being done in the past and not repeat that now because we're mando we're mandatory to actually go ahead and file the statute. So the chief will elaborate on that.
Okay, this has become a very sensitive subject throughout the state of Indiana. And if we're all being perfectly honest in this room, the commissary account is something that opens itself for I'll I'll use the word abuse, manipulation, whatever whatever words you want to put on it. When Sheriff Marte took office, we promised ourselves two things with commissary because you can get yourself in trouble with it and you'll go look at the news and you'll find what I'm talking about. We got DuBois County, that Clark County, there's up north. We we made ourselves a commitment that we were going to use commissary. Do two things with commissary, use it for the benefit of the agency and more particularly the residents of our jail facility. That's where commissary derives from. The other thing we were going to do is be very transparent about what we did with the use of our commissary funds. So this statute lays out eight things that commissary can be used for. The ninth thing is that anything that the county fiscal body and the sheriff agree to. So that leaves it pretty wide open. But then if you go down to this part that I've got highlighted is that money dispersed from the fund under this subsection may be supplemental to or in addition or in addition to rather than replacement for regular appropriations made to carry out the purposes listed in one through eight. So what that tells me is, for example, we're using commissary to pay for the utilities and water bill at this little substation we have down in what Robes at Illinois?
Don't know.
Yeah, man.
So I don't I don't think the statute intends for commissary to pay those types of things. We have cable in the facility. Well, I guess you could look at is is that for the benefit of the of our residents? Yeah, it is. But what we're using that thing for is things that we look at that the the county has an obligation fiscally to fund certain things in in any any jail facility, that being that being one of them. And we can go through the laundry list of things here. But you know, if if you took it to its extreme, you could say, well, then the commissary could pay for the medical services in the jail because that's something for the benefit of of your your residents. So what we what we did is we looked through it and what are what is being paid out of commissary that should be included in a department budget that is in keeping what we believe with this statute? So that's why you're seeing those things transferred. There's another reason and I'll get into here in a minute. But what the sheriff has done, for example, and this goes into the jail budget, too. So, you know, I'm trying not to mix it. I told you they're so closely linked, but you asked the question, so I'm answering. We're we're buying underwear, T-shirts, socks, all of those things. That's a that's a big expense that we took on through commissary so that when you came through the door, you you got those those things issued to you. So you had you had clean clothing. We have bought mats and we have a mat budget. But we've augmented that budget as the statute allows us to for the benefit of our residents to buy additional mats rather than coming and asking you for more more money for mats. So what we're trying to very carefully do here is just what I said. Now, here's the other part of this that is coming and it's coming quickly. The FCC has been working on this for years and it looks like it's going to happen come to fruition in twenty twenty-five is that they are they're putting limitations on what can be charged for resident communications. So phone calls to the family, visitation charges, those types of things. And that's going to bring about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction in our commissary proceeds going into next year as as best we can determine. So we're gonna we're we're if we're not careful, we're gonna put ourselves in a funding deficit. So we were trying to identify those things that that the we think that that is a budgetary item. And then leave what we have here for us to do the things that we can do for our mates. So we're, you know, we're paying for paint, we're paying for cleaning supplies, we're paying for all those things that we we target our population. Now, do we use that for the benefit of the sheriff's side? Sometimes we certainly do. For example, we've used that to allow us to go to the Indiana Sheriff's Association where we can get trained up. Kyle attends the jail commanders conferences where we we get brought up on the best practices and things like that, which is allowable through commissary. But by and large, we have really, really, really tried to concentrate our fire on how we expend commissary funds for the the direct benefit of the facility. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's the direction we took here with this budget.
Good answer.
Statutory statutory defensively defensible.
Yes, you know, and and I'm telling you, I Kyle and the sheriff and I talked pretty often about not letting our the recent commissary is used so often is because it's easy. If you look right up there, the sheriff's, the sheriff's designated at the sheriff's discretion without appropriation by the county fiscal body may disperse money from the fund. If you're not careful, you can get yourself in trouble with that language.
Oh, yeah.
And we don't want to get ourselves in trouble with that language. We want to work in conjunction with the fiscal body.
And I also want to remind you, I mean, you all, I hope you all remember that PowerPoint that we that we first took over. We did inventory of the actual jail, the what it looked like. Right now, with 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 it's it's going to get to a point where we won't have the luxury of maintaining it the way we have right now based on the reduction we receive in commissary. So that's the reason why you see these movements. And like the chief said, we we did our very best not to not to come to you solid grounds to explain what we're doing. So that's the reason why we started with with the actual IC code and explained to you what's coming down the pike and also to what we have done in that facility and what we provide that wasn't being provided before in the past. So we don't want to jump into that.
First of all, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. I want to just confirm what I heard was that you're estimating revenue will go down in that fund by about a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
That's, yes, that's the estimate we're getting from CPC.
Okay, um, that's a lot. And I, you know, I've watched you all, you you're you're not if you're nothing if not very attentive and careful in how you proceed. So I I do, I I appreciate that. I'm wondering if with the concern that you obviously have around what you should and shouldn't be doing with this fund, do you have an internal policy written up about using the fund to just kind of for me, I like to write things down.
Yes, it's called Indiana Code thirty-six.
Policy and regulation are not policy, but um.
What he's trying to say is
Or procedure, maybe procedures.
That that is the guy. That is truly the guy that we what we follow because we could have a policy that goes against that. And guess what? That policy is worthless.
Well, it's interpreting because there's some things here that leave a lot open, as you say, you know, I mean, that's your point.
Without being a smart aleck, okay.
Please, somebody.
When when we make purchases out of commissary, we 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 have a a policy. For for example, sometimes you use the the card before a purchase approved on the card. Two people have to look at that and go, okay, we're good with this. And it's usually Jamie and Jordan. Before an expenditure is made out of commissary, I you know, obviously, the the things that are are just obvious that you can do. For example, Kyle doesn't come to me every month and say, hey, we're we're getting ready to order some more T-shirts and socks at a commissary. You okay with that? He doesn't do that. But before we step out, we we have discussions about it. The the actual written policy, if you will, is is in the the corrections manual that talks about commissary and the uses of commissary. So to answer your question, yes, we do. So we, but I'll be honest with you, our guiding principle is is the Indiana code.
That's fair.
As it should be.
Yeah.
What else?
Any other, Counselor Iverson?
I really appreciate you bringing up the FCC's action because if I could take a moment, it is that that just shows how important it is to vote. Voting is so important because when you exercise that right, there are people that make decisions hundreds and hundreds of miles away that those regulations trickle down and here we are talking about it right now. So I I would encourage everyone to to look up what the FCC just did. It's it's a really encouraging story about what some people have been lobbying the federal government on. And I I really appreciate you bringing that up and its impact locally because it will have that impact locally. And and I'm glad we're talking about it tonight.
Other comments or questions? I appreciate you rattled that code up kind of like Joe Friday. Give me a little bit of laughter and relief.
He didn't even hesitate.
He didn't even hesitate.
Any other comments counsel before we go to maybe a roll call on this? Counselor Hawk?
Right, um, I've gone to the state before when there was questions on this to speak on it. I don't ever expect to have to go to speak on it when you are in charge. I mean, I just, that's, I just know that's not going to happen. So it's not, it's pretty easy for us to miss the obvious sometimes. And, and when I saw movement coming from commissary going over the general fund, I'm going, all these budgets, how are we going to handle all these budgets? And I'm going, well, why did you do this? Well, I should have thought through the whole thing because we don't have to approve of what you're doing with that commissary fund anyway. I mean, so to that extent, I've got to say that I spoke out of turn when Jordan was here. And if you heard that, I'm just one to let you know. Thank you.
All right, I see no further comments. Let's go to a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKinn.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to take a 10 minute recess and so it's 7:12. We'll come back at 7:22 to finish with the jail who's patiently waited. Thank you so much.
Everybody, it takes us a minute to get through this, and this is a bigger night. All right, we'll resume our agenda with item nine. It's the jail corrections.
Yeah, yep, that's okay. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand dash zero three eight zero general fund with a category request of personnel six million nine hundred sixty thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars, supplies two hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred seven dollars, services one thou- one million six hundred ten thousand dollars, capital fifteen thousand for a total budget of eight million eight hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
Second. Thank you. We're once again joined by Ruben Marte, our sheriff. We've also got with us, of course, Chief Deputy Parker. We've got Kyle Gibbons, our jail commander, as well as Jordan Miller, our financial manager. And I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Ian. We kind of touched this a little bit when I spoke earlier on the merit side. A- as you know, we've done a lot in the jail side to get it to the point where it's at now, to actually be constitutional jail. And then also be able to treat our residents and our staff at a certain level that we retain people. Because that's a very, very difficult position to be in and a job to do. So the team got together and tried to put this budget together that I don't think is very high, has gone up, but not as much as we thought it would. But keep in mind that the IC code that was passed to you, that plays a lot into this right here as well. And particularly with the FCC was coming down the pipe with that as well.
Good evening. I just wanted to touch on some of the items that stand out the most, I believe. Starting with an increase from thirty-five or a request for an increase from thirty-five to forty hours for our administrative coordinator. As you know, we have recently added ten additional staff members. So with those staff members comes the additional duties and responsibilities that are associated with maintaining those additional staff members. That would also, as aviation spoke of earlier, that would be the last remaining employee within the Monroe County Sheriff's Office as a whole. An admin side that is not forty hours yet at this point in time. So starting with that, that'd be the administrative coordinator. That's one zero six eight one.
And just a quick, quick follow-up, Mr. Miller, while you're going. This, this is not what we did earlier in the year because that was the sheriff's side, right? Okay, all right. Making sure I got my stuff straight.
Yeah, in a perfect world, we would have piggybacked off that a little bit better. But Jamie worked wonders and did so quickly in order to make the changes for their side. And this is just, to me, this is long overdue. Moving on to some additional items that I believe stand out, we did make a change essentially. We, we feel that it would be best, a better fit to remove or reduce the food service assistant part-time one seven three zero five line from the previously budgeted nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to zero with intentions of actually moving that into our part-time hourly line. We believe that the duties and responsibilities associated with that position could be, could be met and could be handled by other individuals as well. There's a lot of supervising and things of that sort that might already be taking place by some of our other part-time hourly members. So we did move that and adjusted that accordingly. Couple of more items within this budget. Inmate clothing was one of the items touched on with regards to commissary. We have been, in recent years, we've been exhausting the county budgeted funds, which has been right around ten thousand dollars, as you can see. And we have exhausted those county budgeted funds and then resorted to the commissary fund, which we are anticipating will be going away or the amount of funds will be going away. So we believe that to be a need. We also have intentions of making some changes to the type of items that will be worn specifically by the females in our facility, going from a one-piece suit to a two for various reasons. Finally, and I believe Chief Parker will be speaking a little bit in greater detail. We wanted to make note or bring to your attention the medical services line. As you'll notice, we've requested an amount of one point six million dollars. We have had some, a number of changes that have taken place and decisions that we've made that we, as I mentioned, we'd love to share a little bit in greater detail with you. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Chief Deputy Parker.
I actually want to clarify a few things as well. More specifically, the part-time position that we want to move into that part-time budget from the kitchen position. It is essentially a corrections officer. We're having difficulty hiring a corrections officer at the allocated budget of seventeen fifteen, seventeen fifty an hour. When our full-time officer, well, our part-time officers start at twenty-five, sixty-seven an hour. So what's, what's happening is we're getting these part-time kitchen staff, which are really just there to supervise inmate workers. That statutorily were required to train as if they are corrections officers. And we can't retain them because they take that training and then they go other places. More recently, the kitchen assistant, our time assistant, we just hired. She came from another food service that increased her hours and she said, hey, sorry, these hours, it makes some sense for my family to make the move back. So we had to change her hours of availability so we could still retain her. So now she's working two part-time jobs. But that's neither here nor there in terms of what she's got going on. Women's uniform, I saw your, I saw a couple of you guys inquiring about what that could be. More specifically, our inmates wear a one-piece suit. Men have different accessibility than women. And what's happening is we have offered t-shirts, bras, underwear, socks, everything that we can to supplement the issue that the women are facing is, more specifically. But if they're to go to the bathroom, they almost have to completely disrobe themselves to be able to go to the bathroom, which we believe is unacceptable. In addition to that, based on feminine needs, they go through uniforms faster than males do. We permit males to walk through the day room in just a t-shirt and their, and their shorts. And as long as it's not offensive, that's allowed. Women do not have that availability because of them with female body. So what we're trying to do is give them more leeway to be able to carry themselves with a more, a little bit more decorum and some respect to their needs. So that cost actually comes out of inmate clothing that we have been supplementing with commissary. Additionally, I want to touch on some commissary things because I didn't get to sit up here with the big boys while you guys were talking on the sheriff's side. But when we talk about commissary expenditures, we have taken, we've gone to great lengths to ensure that we are providing the facility, the inmates there and staff, everything that they need. And the sheriff spoke on that and I, and we all agree that there's been a lot of progression there. For instance, and I want to touch on just a few things here. When an officer has blood or feces or vomit or their, their equipment or clothing is destroyed, we supplement that purchase to provide our staff those items through commissary. That's equipment for the job. It's covered in the Indiana code. They have uniform allowances and we hold them to a certain standard that it has to look professional and it needs to be up kept, and that is. But if I've got a person that destroys their boot while they're trying to do their job, I don't want that person to think first, ah, I don't want to destroy my boot. And then something happens. That goes for equipment, that goes for the facility equipment as well. If we've got the rolling phone that comes through and it gets destroyed by an inmate, we supplement that income or that, that cost through commissary because that's something an D inmates need. We don't come to you guys because we're allowed by that through Indiana code. But it goes even further into that. I am extremely active inside the blocks with the inmate population because I believe that it's important at the top to make myself available to them to hear their, their concerns. But in addition to that, I'm in there, we buy games, we, I buy them food. We have movies, we have all kinds of incentive-based programs to make sure we're working together. And I explained it as easy as that, this is a relationship. It's not one way or the other. It's us working together and this is how we're going to do it. And it's worked very well. Our use of force has gone down considerably. I haven't got the statistic from this year yet. But commissary in of itself, and we're about to take a huge hit, as Chief Deputy hit on. We are purchasing things for the costs of the transition coordinator. And this is all something we've agreed on. All the transition team equipment desks, everything has come from commissary. All the new medical positions that we, we brought on, all their equipment and all the things they need to do their job has been made through commissary. So I, I don't want you to be under the false impression that we're harboring this, this nest egg that we're trying to protect when we spend that more than anything. And we do do it after exercise and due diligence. So I wanted to touch on that. I really didn't get an opportunity to. But that's, that's commissary in a nutshell.
Comments or, well, let me ask you that. Do you, are you, do you want us to go to comments or questions? Or do you have other things you wanted to?
I probably ought to brief you up between Jordan and Kyle and I and the sheriff on the, on the medical side of this because it, it is important when we're talking about the, the medical services provider that we have in the jail. There's some, there's some things that are kind of alarming here that we want to clue you in on and then we'll give you a little bit of what we think is, is a solution for it. So we currently contract with Advanced ACH, Advanced Healthcare. And we have, we've been experiencing some issues with them, you know, particularly in the last, oh, I'd say eight to eight, nine months, something like that. So, and this will be a little hit and miss. So these guys are going to jump in here because I'm trying to wrap this up for you here. The, the first issue we, we've been experiencing is there have been nursing shortages in our facility pretty frequently to the tune of about sixteen hundred hours since the beginning of the year. They have offset that with what they call agency nurses. So they bring them in, they're not, they're not nurses that are employed by ACH. They bring them in to fill in holes in the shift rather than leave the shift vacant.
And these are also agency nurses that do not have, for the most part, correctional healthcare experience. Is it like a traveling nurse substituting?
Yes, okay.
The nursing homes are, most of their staff is coming from traveling nurses like this.
Yes. So that, that's one issue. The second issue here is just a few months ago, we were notified that they were going completely with RNs rather than LPNs. Well, as you know, an RN is, you know, a higher classification nursing, which is all rolling good. But it wasn't an option. It's, here's what we're doing. So all the, to add to this, this issue that I just spoke to you about, all the LPNs disappear one day and we're trying to fill them with RNs, you know, in, in the interim. So it was, it was a very, what I, what I call it, tumultuous transition from LPM to RN. And just in the last, I don't know, two weeks, we've really seen some, some, you know, desirable movement to getting positions staffed. The substance abuse counselor that this body approved for us. We just met the applicant today. So that's been months in the making to get that person hired. We've struggled with, with getting them to give us a renewal rate for the coming year. Up until the point that I was working on this at about three o'clock today to try to scramble to get this information to you. Jordan has been a beast on trying to gather this information. But we have, we've really encountered some great, great difficulties. So I, I've, I've got a lot of information here, but I, I think I, I think I need to brief you on the cost part of this. So here's what they're telling us. We just got this today that we, we budgeted for one point six, which is, which, which accommodated those positions that we brought on. We've been asking to get, what's our renewal rate? What's our renewal rate? And we've, yeah, since about June. So today we get the renewal rate of two point one million dollars from ACH, slightly more. The other part of that is they have decided, and I'm going to, I'm going to go through my documents here, if I can find their renewal here. That we, we were contracting for a hundred and forty-four hours per week. They have upped that to a hundred and sixty-eight, which, hey, that's all, that's great. But we would have expected a proposal for that rather than here's, here's what we, we were going to do. And then they actually are proposing that be at two hundred and eight hours a week because they're adding forty hours a week to cover holiday, sick, PTO, of that thing. So there's an extra forty hours to take that up to two hundred and eight hours a week. So while we're getting more coverage, I understand, we all understand. But there was never a, what I envisioned in my mind would be in about three or four months ago, here's our proposal to you. Take that to your council. So on September fourth, they don't bite your head off when you walk in there and say two point one million dollars. But we didn't get that. So if, if you, if you tally it all up, it's about two point two, two million two hundred twenty-eight thousand roughly. If you add in the, the hours for the PTO and all that coverage. Then they're telling us that there will be at about a six point five percent increase likely. They're going to forego that for 2025. So we're looking at going to about two point three seven one on January one, twenty twenty-six, if they apply to six point five. So I tell you all that to tell you this, that with all of the issues that we have experienced, with the lack of communication that we feel we've experienced, the vacancies, all those things, we have, we have sat down and talked to a couple of other vendors. And it, it's really premature for me to talk about these other vendors, but we've got, one vendor hasn't gotten back with us, which is concerning to me, but the other one literally came in here last Thursday and had us a proposal on Tuesday, which is right on the button of what we budgeted for, for the current hours that we currently have. It's, it's like sixty thousand over what we have budgeted for. Now, again, we've got to work with the commissioners, obviously, on that contract. We've got to have a proposal and all that thing. But I just wanted to let you know that when we, we know what y'all are dealing with the budget and nobody in this room wanted to come stare you all down and say, we're going to have to do two point two this year and two point three the following year. So it's a work in progress. So I, if you wouldn't mind, look at that budget that we have there for medical. Understand that it's a little bit in flux, but we're doing our very damn best to keep it really close to what is, is in that budget.
And, and just to clarify a little bit with this other company we're looking at, the reason that they can bring their costs down is because they utilize LPNs. LPNs. So we actually had previous LPNs that were let go from their position because of their status that they have, that the company has inquired, asked us if we have contacts for those people so that we could bring them back. So we're going to potentially, depending on what company we go to, bring back LPNs with training and experience inside of our facility. And you can see, where's that list of the hours? I got it. And we can get you guys this record here, but what it is, is a breakdown of nursing hours provided for us by ACH. And again, I'll get it to you, but you can see a significant drop at February when we released our LPNs. We were at three hundred and two of our allocated hours, we went down all the way to a hundred and twelve. So what that happens with that is, is it's not just, oh, it looks like we're not going to have a nurse today. We have inmates that need seen daily. You guys understand completely the implications or the impact of not having that. But more importantly, is it stops my staff from doing their job so that they can make themselves available for certain things. It throws off our med pass, which is obviously critical. It throws off our, our feed time, which is obviously critical. We are statutorily obligated to provide meals at certain times throughout the day. So this is something, and, and I'm just echoing what Chief Deputy Parker said. This is something that we have been trying for months now to get resolved. And he's not joking. When we were sitting in a, in a room at three thirty today, trying to fill these numbers together to make sure we had something to you guys.
One of the things that's really important about who we're talking to here, and again, it's, it's very infancy phases here, but it's, it's repricing. So if a bill comes in, it's, it's pretty common for a medical provider to negotiate with our, our medical contractor to negotiate with the provider to say, hey, can we reprice this and reduce this down? The company we're talking about does that on, on, the bills go to them, they try to reprice every, every bill that comes in. The current provider and is, you, you find things out, you know, we're, as we go along here. But to reprice, we've got to submit a request to them for each inmate, can you reprice this bill? Instead of that being part of the automatic procedure. So I really think, I really, really think that alone is going to, I mean, it won't affect the contract, but what it will affect is, is you know, you know, we have a cost pool. And if you go where the cost pool of that medical needs, then the bills come in. So I really think that if we're repricing every one of these, it's going to be much, much more or less likely that we're going to hit an overage in that cost pool. Therefore, we have to come back to it for an additional appropriation for medical expenses, outside medical expenses. And that's kind of the goal of the thing. We spent a lot of time talking with this, with this provider about this. They, they've came here twice and flown up in an airplane to meet with us personally. So that all works good. The owners have. So, you know, there's a lot of information here that we're still getting, that we're still working on. But the, I guess what I really wanted to tell you is that I think our current provider may have priced themselves out a little bit. And they don't, if they're watching this meeting, they're probably gasping right now because we've not really. And they don't, if they're watching this meeting, they're probably gasping right now because we've not really. Had the ability to talk to them about it. They know we're not happy at this point. But. I I I think we're gonna be able to, I really think we're gonna be able to get us. Into the budget where we're not putting you in an uncomfortable position because we all know that. Medical services in the jail have to be funded. It's not a, it's 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 not an option. So. Jordan, am I missing anything?
Oh, uh, I think you've touched on a lot of things. I mean, it's it's, to me, it's from the top down. Um, I mean, they came in last month and made. Uh, decisions that the number of hours, uh, their staff hours should increase. And and again, along with the other items that we've discussed. No information was presented to us. They just provide us with, um, you know, a breakdown or proposal. Um, and we were the sticker shock. I mean, we're talking, as he he touched on. There's gonna be a 6.5% increase and starting in 2026, um, which would put us. Uh, up in the 2.3 millions and we're talking an increase of almost and just shy of $700,000. I mean, so in addition to things of that sort, uh, just kind of being in the dark with a lot of these items. And then at the bottom, just trying to uh, associate charges and meds to inmates and in a timely manner and have. Uh, you know, the guidance to do those things, just, um, to me, very day to day items. Uh, it's it's just unfortunate. So.
Something as simple as this, uh, when we do Peel Pass medications, you know, happens twice a day. There's a system called an EMR that electronically you can track. You know, the medications that are going to each of them, very, very, very important, obviously, a jail facility. The current contractor, that is part of, it's proprietary for them. So. It's their information. We we have struggled mightily. Getting information about our own mate inmates, uh, about their medical records, you know, if if we have. You know. You know, forced med order or litigation or anything, trying to get that information out is is almost. It's impossible. And Jordan will, I'll touch a little bit on this, but with the company we're talking to. That EMR is is while it's it's in the system. Uh, included in the contract amount. It is through a different entity that they have a relationship with, and those records are ours. We don't have to ask if if for whatever reason they leave. Those those EMR records stay with us. And I know that sounds like a small detail, but it's so critically important. And that's what we're trying to do. We're we're trying to learn. Of what the issues are that are haunting us right now and avoid those issues going in into the future here so that. Whoever comes in behind us isn't dealing with it and. The the fiscal body isn't dealing with with these constant increases. Jordan, am I, did I miss on that any?
No, I think you you said it very well. I just would like to piggyback off that statement and mention, um. More specifically, in middle of April, on the 17th, um, we requested some medical information on two inmates. Um, and unfortunately, it took approximately till I believe the 15th of May, uh, we received information back. One of those inmates. According to them, had no records. Uh, the other had information that was clearly lacking. So, uh, things of that sort. And then at the recent. ISA conference, uh, ran to the same gentleman, still working on it. And I mean, and even to this day, I think we're still, uh, struggling to receive information on two of our inmates. So I mean. It's just things of that sort that just, um, I don't think are acceptable in this nature of business.
The the intent's not to here to sit up and beat on a vendor. I hope you, everybody realize that. I ju- I just. We've tried to be transparent. Yeah, I I think if we're not laying out the issues for you. Um, then we're we're not filling our our obligations to you as the fiscal body to do that. So it it sounds like we're being kind of brutal here, but. Uh, we we speak the truth here that you should know because you, um, we we've got to move forward in some direction here. Um, so I've I've already, I've already, uh, had conversations with, uh, with Angie about. The possibility that we may have to make a change here. So.
Let's see, council has comments or questions on anything in in the budget? Uh, I saw Council Munson, and then I'll go.
I'm not, uh, questioning what you're trying to do. But I do have a question about the source of funds used for healthcare expenses. And I'm wondering if the funding that comes to our county and health department. Could somehow be directed to, uh. Use in the jail. And I don't have any background or answers in this, but I'm willing to. Just throw it out there and say, let's, let's check into it and see if it's possible. And Peter might have some information on. Counselor Iverson.
A devoted constituency, just in a different location. Counselor Iverson, do you want to pick up from there?
Yeah, and in May of this year, uh, there. The Substance Disorder Advisory Council Commission, uh, was interested in learning more about what type of substance use. Uh, disorder, uh, treatment was going on inside the jail. And we were under the assumption that that position had already been filled. Uh, so I reached out to, uh, the the jail, uh, commander and said, you know, can we have that individual come and and talk to us? That person had not yet been interviewed. And so, uh, we actually had this contractual company come to us. And our June 21st meeting of of SUDAC, uh, to talk about what they were doing. I will tell you, uh, this gentleman that came and talked was talking to, uh, subject matter experts. And was promising quite a bit of what they were doing. And the people in the room were kind of looking at each other, being like, I don't think that's happening. Uh, it was, it was really interesting in terms of, uh, particularly, uh, medicated assistant treatment, uh, MAT. Uh, which is, uh, it would, uh, we can get into that in a second, but to Counselor Munson's point. Uh, this individual was talking about STI testing inside the jail. We had two health department staff members sitting in the room saying, wait a second, we're doing STI testing. So, uh, our health administrator has been in touch with, uh, the the jail. Uh, and, you know, conversation's been happening, I I presume. Uh, but they're at least aware of some of that overlap in terms of STI testing. Uh, that's sexually transmitted infections, uh, that that could be happening. But it is not my purview to say that this should be happening or even that it could be happening. But at least the connection has been made. That's one of the areas that could, there could potentially be overlap. But I I certainly, from my own experience in that June meeting of the Substance Disorder Advisory Commission. Uh, what you're saying rings rings true to my ears.
And I I can elaborate that on a little bit. First of all, I think Counselor Iverson, we will do. Whatever we need to do to ensure the safety and security of the people that are in our facility. That is, that is the sheriff's primary responsibility statutorily. But just to put you guys at at ease a little bit, the amount of work that we did to retain retain our mental health workers. But also supplement those with those four positions that we all worked on. We made sure when we're speaking to these new companies, like, hey, we want to retain these individuals. So in talks with, and and Freedom Behavioral Health is contracted by ACH. So they don't work for ACH. They work with ACH. So we are working to still, uh, retain those. So qualified mental health professionals. And our counselors and our, uh, reentry coordinators. With this new contract as well. So we're not gonna get a miss a- in that aspect. So we'll continue to work with the community that we've already established relationship with, uh, and retain those individuals.
On the contractor part of this, and I and I understand exactly what Counselor Munson is saying. That there's, there's a certain aspect that we have to be mindful of when you talk about, uh, you, how we apply treatment. Of any kind in the facility. And part of that is, is that we we have to have. That I I, there's a difference between providing treatment and providing services, at least in my mind's eye. That we have to have a consistent. Methodology. For example, when someone comes into our facility, by statute, we're required to do an assessment of their health within 14 days. Of that individual entering our facility. So that is a, that is something that you're, you look to your medical contractor to go, or make sure we're doing this. And there has to be a system in place in doing that. So when you have, you know. Folks that come in that want to provide services and and volunteer work or, you know. Treatment counseling and all that, that's all well and good, but we just got to make sure we don't get too many cooks in the kitchen, so to speak. And that it, we don't interrupt our ability to care for these folks because we've got. So many people cramped into that tiny little facility and it it becomes challenging at at times. So. The the medical contract. To me. Is the most important thing. That we do. Under the auspice of the of the sheriff's authority, hands down.
And and what it, and to add to that. When we have medical staff and we have our inmates receiving medical attention, consistency is the key. And that's exactly what the chief deputy is talking about is we have to remain consistent for the people inside the facility because they have no option. But us to be there routinely, day in and day out. And when we have too many hands in the pot. Uh, it's it's difficult to ensure a consistency, especially when we have a contracted company. Not having nurses on station.
Be mindful of the time and keep us moving. Are there other questions from any counselor? Uh, I I would offer this comment. I don't think it's out of turn to mention on a public mic, any service that's going on to taxpayers. That you're not getting from it what you precisely want. I I think that anyone doing business with a public. Agency, that's that's the half of the deal, right? It can happen that way. I I'd like to think that those things keep people sharper out there, but not all people think like me. Um, one other thing I'd add to that is I always believe. That if you're not getting the answers you want in a timely manner. It sometimes makes me wonder if those who are on the other end of those services. Might be getting the response that someone of more stature, they might not be getting as quick response at all. And so I. I don't know. I always like to keep people hopping towards the next best thing. And if there is a competitive service that does. What it does, uh, well, I thi- I think that bears looking at us, we can keep talking about that. The other thing I'll say is your theme all throughout the night has been, and all throughout. Your time is about dignity to those inside the center, whether it's uniforms or care. And we've talked about that a lot. And I just think that that is a good guiding principle. That at least at this point in life, among all that bad, we're providing that kind of. That that kind of dignity even among the roughness of it. Any other comments or questions from this council? Yeah, Counselor Iverson.
Uh, may I ask, uh, something that's not related to the contract?
Sure.
All right. Uh, the the first thing is line 24300. Locks, keys, et cetera. We received a very detailed and lovely email about locks. I now know more about locks than I ever wished to know. Uh, but this line is flat. Uh, can you kind of talk a little bit about the relationship to the email you sent this morning and why this line is flat?
Well, I I can touch on the the email I sent. We've been working with the commissioners, uh, because it's locking mechanisms are part of the facility maintenance. Uh, and we brought up, when did we have that meeting?
June, June 20th is when we had the meeting about the ARPA funding.
So what that emails was specifically is us saying, hey, uh, these these needs are not met still. Uh, we were, we were updating the commissioners as to our status currently. Uh, but we were also trying to educate. We're letting everybody know, like, hey, this is what it is. This is exactly what we have going on. There's specific. Uh, locking mechanisms that we have to focus on. But and and I just sent another email today about the the two inmates that were involved with. Uh, manipulating that lock and getting out, chasing down and brutally assaulting an inmate who went unconscious. Uh, that's been a concern of ours since day one. And we have voiced that since day one and we have taken, uh, measures to mitigate that. Uh, but this this email that you guys got today was us saying, hey, we're. Anytime this could go south and we're, we're trying to do everything that we can. But we were also trying to provide an update of from those people, the people that are creating those locks, we still haven't even got. They haven't even created some of it yet. Uh, just recently, they they have. The, one of the locking mechanisms completed and it's into testing now. Um, they were purchased by a new company, uh, Brink's, uh, was purchased by, and I, uh, the name fails me.
Southern.
Southern. So we're working with them. As soon as it gets that, we've got one prototype on our door right now. Uh, and we're, we're working towards finding that solution.
To test that i- in your facility, you're testing the prototype out?
Yeah, and actually, uh, I locked Chief Deputy in there, uh, with some thing.
You did.
And before we had that locking mechanism somehow, I mean, he's a trooper, so I never really thought he was incredibly intelligent, but. Before we got them, I'm in so much trouble. Uh, before the prototype, he got out easily. Uh, which means someone with no experience behind that door, where these people have. A measurable amount of time while they're in there just to sit around and try to think of ways. He defeated it within 20 seconds. We put the prototype on and I took a little bit of joy of him being locked in there because he couldn't get out. The problem with that is though, although they can't get out, our sensors still don't show that. It's secure. It shows that it's unsecure. So when we're looking at as a control officer, we're saying, I'm sending officers constantly. Go check that door, make sure it's secure and that is. So that's part of the update.
So Lieutenant Colonel, if the funding is not in this budget. Did I hear you say that the funding for those locks, uh, is being proposed to come from ARPA?
Yes, and that has to be finalized before the end of the year, I believe.
Yes, it does. And that June 20th meeting, uh, and we'll, we'll run back to it. There was a lot of discussion about it and it was a, it was a joint session between the council and the commissioners.
Yes.
And approved $500,000 for that endeavor.
Right.
So now what we're working towards is getting under contract. And, you know, so the, you know, the deadline is looming. Uh, Dave and I, Gardner and I talked today. We're gonna meet with, uh, an individual from Willoughby. Gosh, the name, uh, the name of the company that does the installations escaping me. I'm meeting with a representative of them. At early next week, if not late this week, to to directly take that issue head on. Uh, because it's gonna be expensive. Um, and Kyle's email was very specific. And and I gotta apologize a little bit for that, too, is that we got a request about that update and what I should have, and I don't know where it came from. So we should have started out with, uh, we received a request for an update of this because you probably all got hit with it blind, like. What is this and where's it coming from? So. That that's, that's what it was about.
And he beat me too. The the request came to us and we just said, well, we better respond to this. Um, because what 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 they haven't mentioned is when that happened, when that individual. When he actually, uh, manipulated that lock. Yeah, they made contact with actually another resident or inmate there, but what really concerned me the most as well. Is that an officer walked in there. And he was by himself. Three people. They could have turned on him easily. In fact, didn't he get hurt, injured of the officer that stopped the.
That's a different situation, but yeah, officers do get injured responding to those incidents. Yes.
So, so, um. With 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 the individual that that's the. Jail commander mentioned to me, yeah, we we, this is an urgency that we talked about way back when, you know. And and what my fear was actually took, took to happen, you know, so, um, but that's a reasonable.
Well, thank you. Hey, one more. Uh, in the, uh, services category, uh, the last two lines, 34,400 and 34,800. Uh, are relating to literary items. We're in a college town and those lines are zeroed out. I don't presume that you're not having books in the jails. Okay, please explain.
It's my belief without having that right in front of my eyes that we did move that over to, I believe, the 1175 fund. Let me confirm that, though. Yes, uh, we've got 8,000 and which we'll speak to on that.
That's the library. Thank you. I was jumping ahead.
All right. Counselors, anything else on this budget?
No, that's about.
Counselor Wilt? Go in favor of the question, Counselor Wilt.
The corrections officer positions added, um, in May are in this budget. And I'm looking at. 10697 on, on the lines. And, um. Are those the courthouse? Security and the drivers? Got it. Drivers. Your chauffeurs?
Transport officers.
Thank you. I am really tired. I apologize. I am really tired. I apologize. So I am curious if I would like to better understand the extent to which the folks who are providing security in the courthouse are successful. And I don't know, I don't know how to get information about that. I'm not specifically saying they are or aren't. Is there an evaluative process that, that we might think about for determining? I mean, we're paying for two full-time positions, as I understand it, plus some other, you know, things. And I just, I'm curious. I've never seen them, for instance.
Well, they're here.
I've seen them outside.
I walked past them. And I personally come here and I go to the different offices and I check, how's it going? Is there anything we're missing, anything we can add? And universally, everybody's very excited about the fact that they can go to the bathroom without somebody that's unhoused being in there. They're excited about the fact that they're, they feel safe about leaving the building and going to, walking to their cars because we've got people inside and outside of the facility. And we have them routinely walking through on a constant basis or sitting in and meeting with people and talking with people. And I ask if that's going okay. It's just part of quality control that we do with follow-up.
Okay. So you're getting positive feedback?
I have not gotten any negative feedback yet.
I have definitely got a lot of feedback, positive feedback. And one of the things that, when you said you see them outside is because I asked them to walk around outside as well. We, we're still in the process of doing a security assessment. Or that's done. It's done. Okay. So, so just their presence assures a lot of safety. But we also had them do a security assessment as well. And part of it is to walk around outside and make sure that the perimeter is secure as well. But yes, we have evaluation as well, but a lot of positive feedback.
Lot of positive feedback?
Yes.
And, and they're all ILEA certified as well. They're not just corrections officers with limited training. They have the highest estate offers, even higher than the troopers offer. Rough night.
I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Counselor Iverson? No, you're good? Be sure. All right. Seeing no other questions, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Deckard?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right, item B.
Counsel, I move to, sorry, I'm tired too. No, you're good. I'm just sleepy. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1170-0380. Public safety lit jail with the category request of personnel $671,443, supplies zero, services $475,000, capital zero, for a total budget of $1,146,443.
Second.
Okay, I'll go through this one. As I mentioned before, this has the other end of our part-time food service assistant line that we moved over.
Excuse me. Is that, was that the right amount for that? Sorry. I just didn't check. I did something wrong.
Going to check real quick, make sure we're not giving all your money to the surveyor.
The state troopers.
Come work in the jail.
That's right. Sorry.
Sorry. Okay.
So anyway, yes, as I mentioned, it does, full transparency, it does include a slight increase from what I believe was approximately 19.5 on our other side of things. So we did add, we added, it's 26,000 to that amount for a total of 176 from 150. And that also accounts for a slight increase in rate that we anticipate. And finally, I was here at this time last year expressing the need for additional funding for our Meals for Prisoners line, 34700. As I expressed then, inflation is, has been a challenge to accommodate. And we came last year and asked for an additional amount of money. And we believe it's going to be pretty close. And we're hopeful that we can, we can accommodate all the needs throughout the rest of this year. But based on trends, based on the analysis by account within date span, we do believe an additional $45,000 to account the inflation is, is a must.
All right, let's go to comments or questions from council members. I'm looking over to my left. Looking to my right.
Counselor Iverson? I see at the bottom, the library services, as well as booking, printing and signs. So that's what I was referring to with the last budget. I see.
But that's not, yeah, that's not.
But thank you.
It's coming tonight. Books and books and more books. Other comments or questions?
We have, do we have a handle on the revenue versus the increased budget request? Hold on, I'll look.
Oh, you mean from previous years? Is that what you're saying?
Increased over previous years relative to our anticipated, like, 4B stuff. I'm trying to get there because I've got a billion windows open. There we go.
And that essentially, when we, we asked to move that to that new line, is us saying we're going to pay that at the base pay. And that's the increase.
Yeah, so it's about 830,000.
830, yeah.
In the whole.
We have to kind of.
Well, understand, I mean, I know the broader, broader discussion, but one thing that we, we see is that we don't ever actually spend all of the appropriations. We always have substantial reversions. I mean, in the, how many? Auditor, do you know, remember offhand, either in the general fund or the public safety lit, what we had in reversions last year?
I'll have to look to be certain, but I have like the number 2.5 in my head for everything.
Million?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder what the percentage is for PS Lit. You know, I mean, I just don't know. And I know you've provided that information. I just don't remember at this point. Okay, just something to think about. Thank you.
And I was going to ask a quick question before going on to Counselor Munson. Is that something that we can kind of mark for a
Tomorrow.
Budget total discuss? Yeah, even tomorrow night. Counselor Munson, is that what you're?
So I remember in January, we were really interested in this because there were a lot of encumbrances. And it was a remarkable amount of encumbrances that looked like it was going to greatly reduce our reversions. So I know you, you went to work on that and told us all about it. And now we've forgotten everything you said.
I can certainly afford that to you once again.
Thank you very much.
But I do want to note that we have very few encumbrances. We had very few last year. I think we might be thinking of the previous year because we've kind of eliminated everything but bond encumbrances.
Oh, right. Yes, you're right. You're right.
Okay, I have on the, the screen a report that Bree provided in the lit special purpose. There, the reversion amount at the end of the year was 261,830.
Special purpose.
That's special purpose.
No, this is lit.
That's, oh, you said lit special purpose.
Publics, public safety lit.
Public safety lit, okay.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm on the right one. My, my mouth said something else. So.
Hang on.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What, what number did you have for lit?
Um, 261, 830.
Okay.
In reversions.
So. One point. I mean. Then we have to look at the other PS Lit budgets, right? So I think we did look at that. And then as a part of our summary of what's going on, if we could.
Yeah. So this in consideration with all of those and as we figure out what we figure out, it goes back to my mud ball of mud comment.
Yeah.
We're making it much clearer as we move forward. On this agenda item, other than that discussion, which will be ongoing, what other questions or comments does counselors have? Kind of look around here. We good for now? All right. With that, let's go to a roll call on accepting this.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that's item C next.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1175-0000. Misdemeanor with the category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $151,300, capital zero, for a total budget of $151,300.
Second.
Well, downhill from here. 1175, as you'll notice, has the exact same total that we received in 2024, that 151,300. No changes were made. We expect to be able to maintain.
Comments, questions from counselors?
Sense.
Makes sense. All right. Easiest thing we've looked at yet tonight. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Got seven minutes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, item D.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1233-0000. Lit correctional with the category request of personnel $528,383, supplies zero, services zero, capital zero, for a total budget of $528,383.
Motion is second. Anything you want to comment on this?
As you all know, these are the six transition team members and the associated deductions, shift pay, uniforms, FICA, all that good stuff.
Questions, comments from council? Counselor McKim?
Yes, this is more of a comment, but this is where we need to look at the 4B. Again, we have to be much more careful about this one because this fund is obviously brand new. This tax rate is brand new and there, there isn't necessarily a whole lot of slack. Now, it does look like because, because there will be enough of a balance left at the end of the year that even though there's a bit of a deficit in this fund, it looks like it'll still have a healthy operating balance. But it can't necessarily take a whole lot more just because there just isn't a lot to allocate there.
I can touch on that a little bit as well to kind of back up what you're saying. These are new officers, so you're not going to see the increases hourly for training officer or cert team member or things like that. So we're, we're pretty safe on, on any kind of increase on our side.
That's, that's worth it, though. Thank you.
It went up.
Well, you mean the, the, the amount from this year to?
Probably.
Well, that's, that's because they didn't get, we started like part of the way through the year.
Gemshell worked hard on helping with that.
Yeah, their salaries increased.
Counselor Hawk, you had a question?
Right. I've discussed this many times and with Jordan and others. And they've assured me they're going to keep an eye on this because you can't go into the red, no matter what. If you have to pull somebody out of there and put them in another fund, but this one can't ever go into the red. And they've promised me they're doing that and I trust them to do it.
Other comments or questions? I'm kind of making the last look here. I see none from the counselors. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, that is right. I was looking for the signal that that is the last item. Thank you very much, Sheriff, and to all your team for all of that. We appreciate it. For the public watching this, this is the end of night two of our budget hearings. We'll resume tomorrow, Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the Nat U Hill Room, where we will pick up from here. This meeting is recessed.